Welcome to the Millbrae Planning Commission meeting. Today is September 3, 2019, and we'll stop with the Pledge of Allegiance for those who are able. Please stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The staff, can we get a roll call, please?
Chairman John?
Present.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Present.
Chairman Joe?
Commissioner Joe, present.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Wong?
Present.
The third item on the agenda is the agenda review. Does any commissioner have any review on the agenda? Seeing none, we close that. So we got one, two, three, four, five meeting minutes to discuss. We'll start with the March 11. Does anybody have any changes they'd like to propose?
No, I motion to approve the minutes for March 11.
We got a motion from Commissioner Joe.
I'll second.
We got a second from Vice Chair Quigg. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Can we just raise our hands?
Please.
Just raise our hands.
Those who are in favor? Five to nothing. And we have March 14. Any additions required? Okay, I motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of March 14.
Okay. I can second that. Those who are in favor? Commissioner Wong?
I abstain. I recuse myself during that meeting, so.
Very well, so we got four, four aye, and one abstain. March 18, 2019, meeting minutes.
I actually had one comment, if I may.
Yes, please.
Just one comment on, and in general, I would say it was a little difficult going through the minutes from a while ago, so I'm inclined to just get them through right now as much as possible. I would note on the March 18, the one thing that I wanted to make sure is that any items that were continued, that we make sure we're clear on what the issues were when they were continued. So 984-5 Larkspur, I believe that has not come back yet, right? And it has not come back yet, but I think the main issue on that one, if I remember correctly, is that the FAR would have been, it was requesting an FAR exception, and then we noted that even if you add back in the greater than 30% slope of that lot, it would still exceed the FAR. And it does talk about it, but it just felt like that was not clear in here. It just says reduce the FAR, so I would have liked to maybe, I don't need to hold it back and bring it back again, but for me, I would have liked to have, I would like to add that one note that the, to reduce the FAR square footage, so that it's compliant at least when you add back in the 30%, greater than 30% square foot, I mean percent lot slope. Is that clear, what I'm trying to say?
I understand what you're saying, and if that's, you know, if that's fine with the commission, then we can make that change administratively. Any other comment?
I had one other comment about the Millbrae Sierra Station project with the sound wall. Question for staff, was there an agreement done that the citizens would get reimbursed to restore their property after that? Was that in the written agreements?
Are you talking about the property owners on the north side?
Right, they will be affected by the barrier wall that would encroach on their property.
Yeah, there was an agreement that was worked out between the property owners and the developer.
Okay, so that's been agreed.
Yes.
I don't know if we want to capture that, but if it's written down in another agreement, then that's fine.
So should we bring it back? Or you want to just make the comment changes? Okay?
Change it with changes.
All right, we'll take the meeting, okay, so a motion?
I motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 18 with the corrections or additions suggested.
Okay. Any seconds?
Second.
The votes, please. Those who are in favor, raise your hand. Five to nothing. We're on to April 1, 2019.
I also have a comment on all of these minutes. If we could please have them a little sooner, it's very, very difficult to kind of refresh the memories after six months, and they're pretty scant. However, I understand that is the direction we're going into, is scant minutes because of the fact that it is televised, but I did kind of want to make that comment.
So if I could just remark on that, I appreciate the comment. Thank you very much, and I apologize for the length of time to get them back. We'd had substantial conversations about the minutes, and in the midst of doing that, we have decided that we're going to be bringing forward action item minutes, and, but, but with the exception that where there is a continuance, or there's a point that needs to be made that's part of the motion, we'll certainly articulate that, but by and large, what you'll see are much simplified action minutes moving forward.
That's great news.
Any other comments with regards to April 1 meeting minutes?
No, I motion to approve the minutes for April 1.
Got a motion from Commissioner Joe?
I can second it.
We got a second from Vice Chair Quigg. Your votes? Those who approve? We got four. Any objections?
Abstain. I was not present at the meeting.
Thank you. So we got four approval, four, zero, and one. Now we're on to May 6, 2019, meeting minutes.
Sorry, I have two notes on this one.
Please, Commissioner Joe.
If I may, 646 Hemlock, it was noted that the vote was three to two. It did not mention who the two were. I think Commissioner Quigg was in objection, but I'm not sure who the second was.
Was it 3-2 or 3-1?
It says 3-2 on here, so the minutes say 3-2, so I would like to make sure that we have clarification on, was it 3-1? One, two, three, four, five. It looks like we were all there, so, but it says 3-2, so it's either three, it's either 4-1 with just Commissioner Quigg, or it was 3-2 with an additional commissioner. Not to keep score, but just, I'm just trying to make sure that we're complete.
I was the only one, I think.
Commissioner Quigg says she believes she was the only one.
But I can't be 100% sure.
It seems like it's the memories of some of the commissioners may not have reflected in there. Could we bring this one back?
Sure.
Make sure that the votes are properly being tallied for, and who presented the objection votes? Either maybe.
And I do have one more comment, just on the second page, when it comes to 354 Ludeman Lane. The paragraph after closed public comment, there's a statement in there that says that views are not protected by any ordinance, and we do have some amount of, provide for some amount of view protection, I believe, right?
Which one are you talking about?
View, second page of May 6 meeting minutes, at the second to last line of after closed public comment.
Yeah.
It says in there, views are not protected by any ordinance, concern is FAR to stay within it, so.
Yeah, and that statement is correct. There are no ordinances that protect views. What we do have, however, is within our design review permit findings, we do have expressions about privacy and the like, so that may translate, but there are no view protection ordinances.
I don't really remember that one.
Well, anyway, I mean, I know views wasn't an issue here, but I just wanted to clarify that, because I wasn't, that was something that, I mean, we've ended up talking about views quite a lot in most of our projects, so I think just to blankly state, well, it's not protected, it's not quite accurate, because we do consider that, so.
But it does say by ordinance, and that's what he said.
I understand.
It's not, yeah, so we've got to massage those words.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I believe, I believe the view protection is actually by design guideline.
Right.
Not exactly a city ordinance, which is what this statement really is, so I think is technically correct.
Right, I get that, so it's technically correct, but it's, at the same time, we do have, add that into a consideration, so I, I don't know, I would have preferred to have a little bit more on that.
Clarity?
Clarity, yes, thank you.
Okay. We're going to bring this one back anyhow, so if the staff could make some modifications to that to reflect the Commissioner Joe's concern. So we continue to May 6 minutes.
Let's move, we're continuing May 6.
Okay, so we get done with all the meeting minutes. Item number five, public communication. This is reserved for persons wishing to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda, but is within the purview of the planning commission. Do we have any speaker slips? So those are, the auto speaker lips are for specific agendas on the item. Does anybody want to speak on behalf, does somebody want to speak publicly with regard to any issue that was within our purview, but is not on today's agenda? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close public communication. New business? We don't have any. Number seven, public hearing. Number A, 210 Vallejo Drive. Design review permit to allow construction of a new two-story residence located in the single-family home R1 zoning district. Staff report, please. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and members of the audience. Can people hear me? All right, the speaker, okay. The project address here is 210 Vallejo Drive. As was mentioned by the chair, this is a design review permit to allow the construction of a new two-story residence located in the single-family residential R1 zoning district. This item was continued from 8/19/19. This is the project location. Located on a corner lot on the northeast corner of Vallejo Drive and Conejo Drive, between Madera Way and Conejo Drive in the southwest highlands of Millbrae in the Mills Estate neighborhood. The site sits on a 7,252 square foot corner lot, zoned, single-family residential, identified in the general plan as a low-density residential lot. This is a photo of the existing site, existing home. The proposed project would demolish the existing 2,475 square foot single-story home and construct a new 3,729 square foot two-story home with a pitched roof design. The subject property is located on the 7,252 square foot corner lot. The first story includes a two-car garage, covered entry, vestibule, and hallway, recreation room next to half bathroom, kitchen, dining rooms, stairway to the second floor, or this is, that's the proposed one, so this, the proposed second floor would have three bedrooms with bathrooms and office and a family room. There would be an uncovered rear backyard patio with access from the kitchen and living rooms. The proposed new first floor would be 2,010 square feet, and a new second floor 1,252 square feet. The first and second story house would have 35% lot coverage with 50% allowed, and 51% floor area ratio with 55% allowed, and would be approximately 21 feet in height. 30 feet is allowed. Again, to go over the summary here, there was three adjacent neighbors that support the project, and 16 certified mail receipts of the revised plans were sent to neighbors on Vallejo Court. This is the information on the existing residence and the proposed project. Again, it would be a two-story combination roof pitch of 212 and 312 in a north-south configuration. A little bit about the background of this project. It was originally submitted in February, on February 14, 2018. The neighbors located on the Vallejo Court expressed concerns about the impact of bay views from the proposed project. To address neighbor concerns, the applicant revised the planned design from a pitched roof to a flat roof on July 2, 2018. Planning Commission approved this project on January 24, 2019. The project was appealed to City Council April 8, 2019, and was remanded to the Planning Commission for redesign, with the council commenting that they wanted to see the front windows added back into the home, and also to consider lowering the height, and one of the council members did not like the flat roof. Subsequently, there was a neighborhood meeting held, and the applicant redesigned the plans to lower the height, lowering the grade and changing the roof pitch and direction. These revised plans were submitted on July 31, 2018. Actually, this, 2019, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's July 31, July 31, 2019. The new story polls and neighbor meeting was held last Thursday based on these redesign. And at this meeting on last Thursday, August 29, there was concern still from the neighbors about the height of the proposed project, and this is the new design with the pitched roof. After much discussion, the applicant was able to agree to reduce the height even further by lowering the grade and also looking at floor and ceiling heights that would be reduced to basically lower the overall height of the building. And I'll go into more detail about the exact numbers. This is a photo of the site plan, the existing and proposed site plan. It's very similar to what was originally approved to Planning Commission, basically on the same building footprint at the corner lot. This is the proposed site plan for the first floor. I'd like to note that the room located, yeah, right, right here is a recreation room. So on the first floor, there'll be a master bedroom here, a combination living room, dining room located here, that's the two-car garage, and this would be a recreation room. On the second floor, this is a bedroom, so there'll be four bedroom, total overall will be five bedrooms at the house. This project includes extensive landscaping, permeable paver driveway, and a new patio at the back here for the dining living room to open out and access the rear backyard This image here shows the existing west front elevation and the existing rear elevation, and then the proposed front elevation and proposed east elevation. The applicant had a survey done to calculate the exact height at the ridge line, and in the meeting last Thursday, was able to reduce the overall height by proposing to lower from the existing grade down two feet. And also, in combination with reduced floor to ceiling heights, he's able to reduce the roof pitch to just this portion here, which would be approximately seven inches above the existing roof pitch.
Sam, can you stand that image real quick? I just wanted to let the commission know just a couple more things about this particular image. It also does show, and I hope I'm not stealing Sam's thunder. But it also does show the outline of what the previous flat roof was that was approved by Planning Commission, and that's, that's shown in sort of that purple area to give you a comparison between what was previously reviewed, and then how it's been redesigned since the council hearing. So I just wanted to make that point.
Right, yeah, the redesign also reconfigured the direction of the roof, and this was, this as Development Director Brad mentioned, this opens up these two view quarters on either side here of the building. A little bit more detail, the overall height of the house is, shall be no higher than seven inches above the existing roof ridge line, and this seven-inch increase is, will be verified by the certified height survey to ensure that the new roof ridge does not exceed a data point of 585.45, and that's indicated here. In addition, to ensure the overall height does not exceed the 585.45 data point established for this home, the seven inches above the existing roof ridge line, framing inspection of the first floor shall be required by the city building official, and the results reported to the city planning division prior to authorization to proceed with the second floor framing construction. So these are two conditions of approval that have been added to this project, condition approval G and H to certify and verify the heights agreed to by the appellant and the neighbors and the applicant for this design. This is again, this is the existing south elevation, the proposed south elevation, existing north elevation, and proposed north elevation. And this is your existing roof plan, and then the proposed roof plan with a combination 212 roof pitch on the second floor and a 312 roof pitch on the first floor. These are the renderings of what the home would look like. And the applicant also installed story poles earlier based on this revised, on the revised design. And, go ahead. Oh, it looks like we'll go back here, it looks like. Show the story pole photos. So staff went out to the site when the story poles were installed a couple weeks ago, and these are photos taken from the street level on Vallejo Drive. This is facing north on Vallejo Drive. So you can see that the roof pitch design and the reconfigured design really has like a lower profile and attempts to minimize impacts to views. Now, these are the plans, so I'll just go back to the presentation. The design review permit must meet the findings A through D for Planning Commission to approve the requested design review permit. Those findings are included in the staff report, and include looking at the architectural landscaping and general appearance of the proposed building, or structures and grounds, and that they are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The project also complies with all applicable developing, development regulations for R1 single-family residential, and the project will not cause a significant visual impact to neighboring views from the principal rooms of a residence. And finally, the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly, harmonious, and safe development of the city, and will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood in which the building or structure is proposed. Staff recommends the Planning Commission review the project, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for design review to allow a demolition of a single-story and new construction of a two-story residence located in the single-family residential R1 zoning district at 210 Vallejo Drive, subject to the attached conditions of approval. Also, one final note, would just like to mention that in the staff report on page two, the, there was a description about the neighbor and, neighbor and application meeting, and I just wanted to clarify, and staff will correct the staff report, that originally the applicant offered to do a 3D modeling from all of the four condominium buildings located on Vallejo Court, but due to not having the accurate enough elevation data to do that, he offered to do the story poles, and so the story poles were installed instead of that, and, and that was basically what the staff report should indicate, so I'll just make that correction to clarify that. And I'm available to answer any questions from the commission of republic.
Thank you, Mr. Fielding. Does any commissioner have any questions for staff at this moment?
Any commissioners?
Anybody?
I have some, just clarify for quick.
I have some, just clarify for quick, some questions.
Commissioner Joe.
If I may. First of all, thank you so much to the staff for all your work on this, because it seems like it's been a lot of work back and forth and to all the neighbors and to the applicant. Just a quick, couple of questions. The story poles that are currently up there, then they are not reflective of the most current plan, yes?
That's correct. So the, these story poles are reflective of the July revised submittal. And then the meeting that was held on Thursday last week revised them even lower than what the story poles show. So, but I still felt that, you know, if staff felt that it was good to see it visually, because it, it's very close, we're talking about seven inches, it's very close to, to what the actual lower design, design will reflect.
So how much is, is that 10 inches lower?
The, so.
Nine inches?
The, the elevation, so it will, it will go no higher than the existing ridge, no higher than seven inches of where the existing ridge is.
Okay.
And that's, will be confirmed by the datum, the survey elevation datum.
So, so the, where the existing story poles are, it'd be about another 11 inches lower.
Okay, that's, that's, okay, so it'll be 11 inches lower than even what's there right now?
Correct.
Okay, great. And then the chart that we have is, again, I think it's reflective of a, a previous plan. Just to confirm, I think the latest, the staff chart that we have is for July 18th, the numbers are. So I'm assuming that it has changed, but is it just the height that's changed, nothing else, right?
Yes, yeah, it's been revised, the overall height now is 20 feet. I think before it said 21 feet, but now it's 20 feet.
It says 20 here in the staff chart, so.
It also has the footnote.
Right.
Which leads you to the condition.
Exactly.
That really explicitly lays out what the maximum height of this home would be if the planning commission chooses to take that recommendation.
But everything else is the same, so that was the only difference laid there. And so no other exceptions were requested, right, just to confirm that? And then, what kind of a slope is this lot on? Is there a slope going toward the back? Because, you know, Vallejo, Conejo, they're, they can slope down, but by this time, it's not that much, right? Or do we have?
Oh, let me go to the plants. Yeah, there is a slope to the, in the back. If you'd like, I can go to the survey on, on the plant sheets. So I'll go to the landscape. So, the, there's a slope back here along the edge here, and then on this side, there's a slope down to the street. So and then it gets, it, it gets deeper as you go back, because this, the, the grade of the road goes down here. So this, there's definitely a slope on this edge and then at the back here.
Okay, but the, but the level of that slope, because if they're talking about going down now, is lowering the grade down, does that slope, would that require a geotech report on it, or is it pretty okay?
No, it's, it's, it would be mainly going, this is the, sort of the level construction area. And so it would be lowering the, the pad, the foundation.
Okay.
Area here.
So it should be okay, then, you're saying, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, just, just for the record, I think Commissioner Joe, I think if you look at page A9 dot O, which is essentially giving you the contour of the lot, it's actually in the amended plan that is in front of you. I think the elevation difference within the lot is between 560, 566 to 563, no more than three feet apart.
Okay.
From one corner to another.
Okay.
So relatively flat lot from that perspective. So, Mr. Feuding. So is my understanding that they're excavating two feet below the existing grade, and that's where the foundation begins?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
How does that affect the driveway and the front of the property? Is there going to be a slope from the sidewalk down toward the garage? It's not there in the plans.
There, there will be some, some slope, but I, I'll have the, the architect to, to talk a little bit more about that. But it's not going to be, it'll be designed in a way to meet the requirements as far as the slope for the driveway.
Mr. Feuding, so I got to read the special condition a little bit on page 15 of your staff report, which contains the special conditions at which the approval is seeking. Particularly G and H, that it's specifically spelled out how many inches above the existing house roof ridge line and a datum at which the maximum datum point where the house can be built. Now, I understand the intent of that, but how does it come into play with special condition E, which also, prior to framing inspection, a licensed surveyor certified the roof ridge in writing for the building department prior to framing inspection? I would imagine these are essentially the same thing.
Well, so let me talk to you a little bit about what the approach is and the thought behind it. So, at the meeting last Thursday, again, as Mr. Feuding had indicated, there was still concern about the height. And I can talk to you a little bit more about that. But essentially, upon leaving that meeting, I think there was a sense of agreement between the neighbors and, and the applicant that the maximum height of this home would be no more than seven inches above the existing ridge line. So the way in which we get to that datum point is from a licensed height survey. That, that was missing in the first round submission, that's what's caused a little bit of this confusion. So we now have that. To create some level of surety that we're going to hit that datum point, the idea was that they'll come out and do a height survey at that first floor framing. We'll know what the floor-to-ceiling heights are at the time of the plan check submission. So if there's any inaccuracy in the construction method, before we even go up to the second floor framing, we would know at that point if anything is off from the floor, from the finished floor to the ceiling heights that are on the submitted plans at time of, of plan check. So that's, that's the idea behind it, was just to have another check-in rather than build the house all the way up to the two floors, then do a height survey only to find out if something's off. We'd rather know sooner than later.
Right, so, I mean, I understand the logic behind that, and I think that's explicitly being spelled out on page A4 dot O, where the maximum height, there's a maximum new ridge max that is special, being, that being documented on the plan. And it's my understanding that this document, A4 dot O, along with the rest of the plan, will become a legal document once being approved.
Absolutely.
Right, so, I mean, it seems redundant for us to be putting special conditions such as this on the approval document, given the fact that framing inspections would have to be certified and done in accordance with the plan, which already been documented.
Right.
So I, I'm just trying to understand the logic, the necessity of G and H, given the fact that it's already been documented on the plan, is it could be a part of the legal document anyway?
That's correct. I, I think that, like any plan, like any development plan, both the plans and the conditions of approval worked hand, hand in hand. And so this was just one more mechanism to put in place to make sure that all parties know what the, the rules are here. So while some people could be, you know, neighbors, may not be as adept at reading actual blueprints and plans, the thought was by having it in plain English here that it would, that it would also provide some level of surety that we won't have this height issue.
Yeah, it's just, okay, I mean, I understand the logic behind that, it just seems very redundant, and yet it's unconventional, right, to have these kind of documentations on the special condition, given the fact that these things are already being documented on the architectural plans. But, so it sounds like there's two inspections required.
That's correct, I mean.
Two certification of height.
Yes.
One is the floor plate of the first floor, the, the height of the first floor upon framing completion, and then the roof ridge at the end of the.
Absolutely, yes. And then, you know, just, just on that topic, you know, there are other special conditions in here as well. It's all aimed at the same thing, which is to provide that level of surety. We've also conditioned that at time of plan check submission, that the appellant is notified so that if they'd like to come in and see the building permit set. So we're going to leave here with an, you know, perhaps we'll leave here with a, a set of plans that are approved at the design review phase. The next step would be submission of plans into plan check so that people are aware, they can take a look to make sure that those are consistent.
And then they're, given the fact that they're already public document anyway, so anybody can come in anytime to view them.
Absolutely, but this was just to give notification that they are now in. And then last but not least was the solar panels, which would be installed on the first floor.
Yeah, which is condition J, is that correct?
Correct.
That any solar panel to be installed in the future would not be done on the second story, but rather on the first story. Okay, which is where the open space area designated by the purple space. Any commission have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a couple clarifications. So just about the process, I know that this project's been very contentious in the, from the last meeting. It seems like, you know, there's been a revision, and where are we with, before there was a lot of returns with, from the neighbors, either supporting or opposing the project. I don't see that in this package. Do we have any indication about how many neighbors are opposed still against the project or in favor of the project?
I guess a more elaborate way of saying is based on page seven of your staff report, that it has a chart documenting how many support letter you receive and how many certified mail, how many oppose. I don't see any oppose, but the date at which these things were sent was documented as February 8th, 2018. Obviously, that's not the latest.
Right, yeah, there, there was, for the revised plan, not the plan that was revised Thursday, but the previous one that was submitted July. There were neighbor consultations forms sent out to the condominium owners, to all of them, via certified mail receipt. The three that weren't support were the, those were the original neighbors on, of Conejo and the, the other neighbor next door on Vallejo Drive that had supported the initial design. We didn't receive any other neighbor consultation forms that, that came back at all. We met last Thursday with the appellant and four or five neighbors from the, I believe there's like two, they represented like two or three of the buildings. And they expressed, they, they, they expressed their concerns that they'd like to see it even reduced, the height reduced even further. But staff didn't receive any emails or phone, phone calls or neighbor consultation forms from any other neighbors about the revised design. It, it was also sent out via 300-foot radius notice, a postcard, and also posted in the newspaper. I, I do want to point out, as far as the neighbor consultation forms, we did receive one today before the meeting from the, it was handed to me from the applicant. And she's located at 225 Vallejo Court, Helen Patricia Snyder, and was, is opposed to the project due to concerns about restricted view of the bay, reducing value of her property, and increasing number of cars parking on Vallejo Drive.
Can we see that?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Feuding. Any other questions for Mr. Feuding at this point?
So just continuing with that, I just want to make sure that there's been adequate.
So, so I'd say just generally, since the time of the council meeting, early in, I believe it was in April, we sat down in the council chambers with a number of concerned residents and the applicant to talk further about the design and the height and the bay views. Leaving that meeting, there was some sort of verbal communications about height reduction. I think it was not until the height, the certified height surveys were done and the latest plans that were revised as of July 18th, that the neighbors had a full understanding of what the redesign would look like, which I think was somewhat different from what they understood in the April meeting when we sat together, which prompted a sit-down again last Thursday. And my belief is that leaving that meeting last Thursday, that there was an, an agreement to this proposed design. Now that's, now that, that said, that's just the neighbors that were in attendance at, at that meeting. So the city then embarks on our, our normal application process, the notice again. So again, this, this hearing tonight is de novo, it's brand new, it's as if we're hearing it for the first time. So anybody else is welcome to be here, but we did have a number of interested parties that have been involved throughout the process that were in the meeting last Thursday.
Was there anything else that would have been required to outreach to the community, make sure that they have adequate notice to, of this meeting and the previous meeting?
Yeah, the, the direction from council after that hearing was that we sit down and have a, a meeting, which we did in April, and then again, last Thursday to, to hear the, the continued concerns.
So everybody that went to the council meeting, all the neighbors that were in favor or opposed, they knew at that meeting that there would be a special meeting to discuss?
They would have been notified, they would have been notified the normal way, yeah.
And then from the last council meeting, I know that there was a lot of discussion about the accuracy of the datum and the elevation heights. Can you speak a little bit about what we've done to certify? Or was there an independent party that certified the heights and are we sure they're accurate?
Yeah, so, so, yes. And I'll have the architect speak to that a little bit more. If you recall that when this project first came before planning commission, the fact that the flat roof design was far below what the maximum height limitation is in the zoning district doesn't typically prompt such a fine-tuned height survey in advance, right? Because there's, there's some room to play with. But because what is the most important thing about this particular case and the neighborhood concerns is the height, the architect did have a certified height done through, through a surveyor that's, you know, licensed and has to sign that under a penalty of perjury on their documents. So that's what's been prepared. I can have the architect speak to, to who that surveyor is and when, when that was received. But that is, that is the document that the city will be using moving forward to establish those height limitations.
And that was all reviewed by the city and?
Yes, so we.
By the city engineer?
We, the city planning staff has that licensed survey, yeah.
And they're okay, they, they accept that as valid?
So with, with a licensed surveyor, when they license, with their license and their signature, that is taken as, as correct, yes.
And also one more thing, just for the first story, surveyor certification, which is a very unconventional way of doing construction, right, is there something that has already been stipulated with the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we move on to the architect? Can we have the, can we have the applicant on stage? Podium.
Can you hear me? Is that okay?
You speak to the mic.
Good evening, Commissioner Fong and fellow commissioners. Thank you for having us tonight. It's been a long road, longer than any of us ever thought it would be, but I think we're at the end. Just a couple clarifications. The roof height, we agreed in a meeting last Thursday that we'd all agree that it'd be no more than seven inches above the existing roof. About three weeks ago, I had a licensed engineer, a licensed surveyor come out, who's done a lot of work in Millbrae and knows Millbrae very well, came out, established a datum point off a sewer manhole cover, which is right directly in front of the driveway, which is a registered height datum point. So we were working off USG map that had accurate data points. He shot the whole site, shot the roof lines on all of it, per staff's requirements, and those were submitted. He also came out and certified the story poles for height. And there is, I think, a tolerance that staff has of three inches, which we were well, well within the three inches. The existing story poles are actually about nine inches above what our new roof line will be. I think we had about 14 inches, maybe 13 inches, give or take. So those story, that, that ridge line is going to come down about half of what, what is there now, just, in just ballpark numbers. One of the things we heard early on was that there's a big. One of the things we heard early on was that there's a big concern about the, after our first design, we heard that they wanted a lowered roof, and so to get it as low as we could, we went with more of a conventional flat roof, which is kind of also characteristic in the neighborhood. There was concern from some of the council members that they didn't like the contemporary look, that it didn't fit in very well with the neighborhood, so we did a complete redesign to give it a gable roof that has a little bit of a contemporary look. My direction on the design for the second story, as you looked at the elevation, was to really reduce the mass of the second story so that it became kind of more of a tucked into the roof line rather than a prominent feature that you see on many second-story projects. We did get a lot of positive feedback from all the neighbors on the condominium projects that they liked the new concept of the new design. They were still concerned about their views. After our city council hearing, we met and we had some discussions about heights, and in that meeting, I requested that we, that I actually go to the site to visit various neighbors that wanted to receive me to actually physically look at their views from their windows, because we were not allowed to just take a picture from the property. I did that, and in that meeting, I suggested what, to some of the applicants, that maybe I'd do a 3D model, and I, the images that you see are actually 3D models that we do, and we have superimposed those models into real data or into photographs. But as I started to work on this, I realized that out of the, maybe the four models that I was going to create, there's actually 16 neighbors, and how can I just do four of the neighbors and not do all 16? And the cost to do that got out of control. And I realized that maybe if we put up story poles that show the new roof line and what the impact of the view would be, would be a more accurate way to represent our project as we proposed to have it built. I met with Michael Fong, he thought that was a good idea, and that way all the neighbors would have a good representation of the height of the new proposed project. One of the things that I'd like just to talk about, and Commissioner Fong, you hit on this pretty much on the nail on the head. My heights that we have proposed, and I think the other commissioner talked about the grades, if you look at the grades, the way we have proposed, if you look on sheet A 4.0, actually what I've done is lowered the house as far as I could so that we could get some grading, but also maintain our original design and the original interior heights that we had met with my client that he was, that he asked for. I would like to have the opportunity, and I, because this happened last Thursday with these discussions and my client wasn't able to be in that meeting, I don't want to be bound by a set finished floor height for the ground floor and the second floor, but the reason being is that we can actually, if, working kind of within a sense of engineering value, we call it, maybe we could actually lower some of the ceiling heights, get that finished floor that we have right now, that's about one foot nine, actually below existing grade, a little bit higher than, it will never go below what we have proposed on the plans. But it's possible, instead of doing a 10-foot ceiling, I'm not saying we're going to be bound by anything tonight, I might need to have that discussion with my client, but maybe he might say, well, let's do nine foot eight, and we'll drop it down four inches. And so, by doing some tweaking with the finished ceiling heights, floor heights, we might be able to bring that grade up a little bit. And I think that would reduce the cost of the project because of the overhaul of grading. So, it's, I've been doing this for a long time, we've never been bound by certifying a exist, the proposed first floor and second floor height. We are totally acceptable to have a certified ridge height, because that's what the neighbors are really concerned about. The interior heights have no bearing on any of the views. It's just going to put a restriction on staff, it's going to restrict it on my client and the design, and it may be to the, not to the better of the project. So, I'd like to have those conditions of G and H removed and just stay with the requirement for the maximum height certification of the project. One of the things that, that was a little bit of a challenge for me was, after we put up the story poles, I had requested an opportunity to go up to the project site and actually view the new story poles and the impact that the new story poles would have on each condominium owner, and I was not given that access. So, I don't really feel that the degree of view that's being taken away is significant impact, but in the spirit of trying to get a common agreement with all the neighbors in our meeting last Thursday, I didn't press the issue of going up and looking at, we wanted, we wanted to meet tonight for this hearing. I didn't want to prolong it and felt that if they were set on this seven inches and they agreed to that, we agreed to that, and the whole idea was that we come here tonight, and as you noticed, there weren't a lot of letters of opposition and that we had before. And so, that was our goal, is to have this common sense of approval. I think that, I'd also like to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank the applicants. Does any commissioner have any questions for the applicant at this point?
Just one for now.
Commissioner Joe?
Hello. You mentioned that you are requesting to have special conditions G and H removed. G is just talking about the seven inches above the existing roof line. You're fine with that, right?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So, it's just special condition H that you're requesting?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. I would also like to address, I think Commissioner Tao, you had a jau about the geotech on the site and any kind of excavation. The project, when you do a new, a new construction, we're going to have a geotech report done as part of our building permit process, so there will be a geotech report done for this project.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Wong?
Yes, what do you envision the roof construction to be like? Will there be insulation in the roof? Is it would...
There'll be, the roof, the roof will be required to have R30 insulation, it'll probably be a solid foam insulation with a height. We haven't done the actual math, it'll either be a two-by-eight rafters or two-by-10 rafters for the, for the roof.
Anything else, Mr. Wong?
That's it for me.
Okay. So, I just want to get you on record here, so you're in stipulate, so your stipulation with the city as well as the neighbor is, is all the special condition listed between A to J except condition H?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. So, we're open to public comment before we have a discussion. We have five speaker slips in front of me. The first one is Wei Xia Guo. Three minutes.
Hello, good evening, everyone, commissioners. My name is Wei Xia Guo. I live in 206 Vallejo Drive, and this is actually my third time here attending this project hearing meeting. With all the time and effort everyone put in, I believe Kevin's project is ready to be approved. The proposal has been revised several times to minimize the negative effect to Vallejo Court, and they've reduced the floor ceiling height, so we can see there's a lot of have been compromised. So, every owner has the right to develop their property, and then the owner have contributed a lot to our community. They've always warmed heart to everyone in the neighborhood, so now I think it's time for our community to give something back to them as well. The house will be the retirement home, and for such nice people like them, I think they deserve it. So, I really hope that we can approve this proposal tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guo. Next, we have Ms. Alice Kwan.
Hello, good evening. I'm Alice Kwan, living in 1085 Clearfield Drive. I thought because for this project is my third time staying here, and all the good reason, I would like to support it, have been stay in the past couple of times. Today, I still want to say something. We are just living in a very small, warm community. It's a good example, I thought, something we may disagree in the beginning, but I thought Mr. Zhang and Mrs. Zhang and what we, the future neighborhood was so deeply and trying to work so hard to compromise all people's, you know, the thought. I thought it's a great example, and we have all neighborhood be a very peaceful and be a good friend and be a good neighborhood in the future. I really want this project can approve for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kwan. We have Mr. Zhou Chen next.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Zhou Chen. I'm living, have been living in Millbrae for over 20 years. I'm here tonight again to support the construction for the project at 210 Vallejo Drive. Since the first hearing in January this year, the owners have been changing the plan and make significant concessions to address the concerns of the neighbors. As you can see from the start presentation, the eve of the roof will be lower than the existing house. The width of the roof is only seven inches higher than the existing house. With the setback on the second floor, the new construction actually will open up more view for the neighbors from the existing house. In addition, the neighbors' house are on a much higher elevation than the subject property, and they are anywhere from 140 feet to 340 feet away from the subject property. The view cannot be blocked from such a distance and much higher elevation from a seven inches increase at the width of the roof. Rebuilding the older houses will beautify the neighborhood and will increase the property value. It is the legal right of any property owners to develop their house. I hope the planning commission will approve the proposed project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Next, we have Mr. Michael Pun.
Good evening, commissioners. Yeah, we, I'm the appellant on this project at the city council, and I want to thank the architect, Mr. Torrent and Mr. Chenk for making all these changes. And I think right now, we are, the neighbors are generally okay with the current design without opposition in majority, but however, those conditions that Mr. Knoll just mentioned that he wants to remove, I hope we can keep those, because those are the condition that we discussed at last Thursday's meeting with the city's planning commission being there, and also Brett and Sam, they were over there. I think we should be respectful for each other that those condition are all agreed upon and not to be removed from, those are, like, from this staff report or the approval form. And one thing that I want to point out is that, like, well, actually, I want to ask Torrent that, like, are you requesting to remove condition G and H or just H?
H.
Just H? Okay. So, basically, you still keep that seven inch, not to excess seven inch?
Right.
All right. I think that would be fine, but one thing I want to point out to Mr. Chenk is that, like, there's a precaution for the initial survey. Like, at the last Thursday meeting, I requested to have a survey before pouring the slab, like, the first floor, finished floor elevation to be surveyed and inspected by the inspector before pouring the slab. In that case, nothing will be wrong, like, that's exactly what you proposed, and otherwise, in the field, you don't know if you're accurate or not. Like, you can't just have a worker go out there and take some measurement, like, two feet down.
Thank you. Ms. Jeannie Chimos? So, do you still want to speak? Thank you. That's all the speaker slip I have. Has anybody else want to speak on item 7A?
I just would like to express my understanding of maybe our discussion, because as an architect, and I've been doing this for 40 years now, I've never been bound by certifying any exist, or any new slab or second floor elevations. We certify ridge heights, eve heights, daylight planes, setbacks, floor area ratios, those types of things. But by putting a restriction on our, say, certifying the garage slab and if it's off, then we have to start all over, is really redundant, because it doesn't make sense, because there is the opportunity, as I mentioned before, that, working with my client as an architect, and he's going to be the contractor, so he's going to make sure that it's done right, and then I've done many projects with Kevin, and that's why I'm here tonight, that it's going to be done correctly. And if we say, okay, we're going to keep the finished floor at, say, 583.5, and it comes in at 583.9, they go, hey, wait a minute, you know, tear it out, because it's off two inches. That has no effect really on the massing of any of the views that are, that we're talking about for the last year, okay? The massing of the house is, and the way it looks is pretty much set. The only thing that we may be able to tweak a little bit is we may want to say, let's bring, because right now, if we built it the way I have it designed, there's going to be more grading involved, and maybe we don't want to do that much grading. And if we can work it out, we haven't had a lot of time to analyze the grades to a specific design, because that's important, grades are important, that we get everything correct. Right now, the driveway of the new garage is going to be about maybe five or six inches below the curb on the street, so that means there's going to be a slight slope down into the garage, we're going to have to have a trough drain, we're going to have to have water that's going to be drained up, you know, it's going to go into the street and blah, 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 which we want to try to avoid. So, it may be to everyone's benefit, not just my client and the work that we have to do, but also to, to the, to the neighbors, where we don't have all the driveways, all the driveways along the, on slope up of six inches. And we would hope that we can kind of maintain maybe just a level drive, which I think can be done, but because... But because our meeting was Thursday, we had a discussion. I didn't have time to, you know, since Labor Day weekend, to go through and really tweak everything. So I don't think by saying that we have to certify and keep that condition H in there is really kind of bounding us to something that I don't think is to the betterment of the whole project. So I'm going to, and I don't believe that I actually agreed to it. We talked about it. And I think Brad Maginari, I think if you might recall, that I wasn't in favor of it because I would not be, that's something that we've never done. And I know that there's the opportunity to make those changes. So that's my rebuttal to Kevin Fong. And I would like to say, thank you for all the.
Anybody else want to speak on behalf of this project? Anybody else, before I close the public comments? You had your three minutes, sir. Does anybody else want to speak? Okay, you have your three minutes. I have your sheet here. Okay? Thank you.
I'm Jeanne Chamos from 205 Vallejo Court, and we're on the view side of the building. So I appreciate all the work that the architect and the owners have gone through. And I'm not here to approve the project in any way at all. We've been back and forth on the plans numerous times, as I'm sure you're aware. And we thought we had come to agreement months ago. Only find out that when we got the revised plans, they were totally disregarding the agreement we thought we had come to. So the second meeting with the city was, I think, a hope to bring us back to where we thought we had been or close to that agreement. So because we've been back and forth so many times with so many changes, I would really like to have every opportunity to survey or do whatever's necessary to ensure at every point of the way that the building is built as per agreed and there aren't any oops, we missed by an inch here, five inches there. Or I want to make sure it's done right and done in accordance with the agreement. That's all my.
Thank you. No more public comments? Anybody else? We'll close public comments. Discussions among Commissioners. Who wants to start first? Anyone? Okay. We'll start with the side. Ms. Kuo, would you like to? Or you could defer if you don't have any.
That's fine. Really happy that it seems like everybody's worked out an agreeable solution. I know that the design and the concessions made by the homeowner and the architect, it's going to be a challenge, like you mentioned, with the grading, drainage. You know, drainage is the most important to a home because water seeping into the house can cause a lot of problems. And then I asked about the ceiling and the height and the, you know, spacing between the different floors, the first and second floors. I know if you don't get that right, you're going to hear, you know, everybody walking around above you on that second floor. So, you know, compressing all this space and doing the construction, you guys will have a challenge to do it and do a good job. I wish you the best. And then, you know, we wanted to make sure that the neighbors, because there were many neighbors opposed, that they had adequate opportunity to make sure that to attend the meeting, voice their opinions. And I know, Mr. Poon, you mentioned you were opposed in the previous meeting. So I'm really happy that you guys worked something out and you guys are good with the project now. I know that the city, we need to make sure that, you know, there's various stages for them to do inspections, such as doing the foundation and the slab. So, you know, we need to make sure that the city is aware of these issues inspection staff, and they look at it very closely. I think there's not much more I have to say on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Kuo. Who wants to go next?
Sure, I'll go.
Ms. Zhou?
Sure. It's going to let other people. As I mentioned earlier, I'm glad to see just the cooperation that's been going on and just all of the work that the staff has been putting in, additional work, staff, the applicant and all the neighbors. That it's great to have. I am, I think it's great that it's actually opening up more views than even the existing house, it seems like, and I like the design much better. The way it is now, it feels a lot better, so not so bulky, massy. My one, I'm not clear because the, and I would actually ask you, I don't know your name, sorry, the applicant.
The applicant.
Yes, if you, just the architect, because you've been mentioning a few times, oh, we can tweak it or the grading and all of that. And so usually when we're, if we're going to be approving something, we're approving what's before us. But now it sounds like you're talking about, you know.
More clarity on the slab heights and the first floor plate?
Right, because we started out this meeting with our staff saying that now we're talking about, you know, lowering the grade by two feet, and that's going to make it, you know, good to get the height to where we need it to be. And then what I'm hearing from you is that you're saying, actually, that might be a little bit difficult. So it could be, maybe we can tweak the ceiling heights instead. So I, you know, I don't like going through, I'd prefer not to, I'd like to have something in front of us that we're actually looking at what we're going to be approving or not approving, and.
Thank you for, you know, that observation. If you look at Sheet A5, shows the sections through the house that actually delineates finished floors, both the ground level and the second floor and relative ceiling heights. I'm totally okay if you want to approve that, okay? But I would like during the construction documents, if we were to say, you know what, we can raise this house, I mean, raise the slab a couple, you know, and then bring it back to staff to review with the neighbors.
I'm sorry, can you hold on for a second? There's rustlings I can't hear. Sorry.
I would like the opportunity. I have no problem if you want to approve exactly the way it is. But I would like to have the opportunity, before we submit for a building permit, and the building permit will have all this information on it. It'll have the finished floor heights, it'll have the ceiling heights, it'll have all that information in more accuracy because there'll be working drawings. If there is an opportunity to maybe make some revisions to some of those heights, before we submit for the building permit, I'd like to have opportunity to submit to staff that would then have it reviewed by Mr. Fong, who's very knowledgeable on grades and grading, which I appreciate very much, and he could then convey that to the neighbors. But what would not change would be the upper roof line would stay exactly the way it is, and the lower, and that other roof line would stay exactly the way it is. What may change might be some elements inside the house. And it may be that by bringing the garage slab up six inches, we eliminate having to have that trough drain for that. But we can make it work the way it is right now. So I'd just like to have the opportunity, before plans are submitted for building permit, that they would be reviewed by staff for any minor changes that would also be reviewed by the condominium owners on Vallejo Court. I think that might be a prudent way to address that.
And is that something that we would, I guess for the staff, then is that something that we would put in as a condition, or you're okay with the plan? It's okay that they make the revisions as long as, as long as they remain, they keep the roof height the same, or do we not need to say anything because the details are going to come out in the building?
One thing we should keep in mind is that what we do with this project had to be consistent with some of the other projects that has been done in the past, right? So whatever requirement that we put on this particular project should be the same as what requirement that we would normally put.
Right, but my point is, in the past, whenever we have a plan, we're going according to the plan, right?
Understand.
Right now, what he's saying is that, what the architect is saying is that we'd like to have some flexibility to be able to, you know, adjust out the plan. And I don't have a problem with that. I'm just saying, is that something that we would specify? Because usually, if you have a plan and we're approving it, that's the plan, right? So now we're saying, okay, we want to give them a little bit of flexibility as long as the height stay, you know, the outside stays relatively the same.
Right, so if I could answer that, I think as plans come into plan check and they've spent, they've got their entitlement through the design review, and then they go into actual, you know, construction drawings, there can be some slight deviations. I think our conditions of approval look at allowing for some of those things. In this particular case, the one thing that's sort of non-negotiable is the point that that roof ridge needs to be no higher than seven inches above the existing roof line. So if there are some changes to the floor to ceiling height on the first and second floor, I think as long as they're meeting the building code, those are some things we can work with, as well as it's not impacting the overall look of the design, right? Those are the two things that we would pay attention to. The commission is certainly able to add a condition or a modified condition. In my opinion, this approach that we were taking, while it's not the standard approach, it was really just to try to ensure that we don't have an issue at the tail end of this project where a height survey comes back and now it's two inches over what we've established at the datum point. Because I can assure you, at that point, that's going to be a different discussion. So if the commission wants to massage that condition, we can do that. There are things that we can do, but the overall height is something that would be conditioned.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to make that clear because we get plans to review, we have revised plans here, architect talks about other revisions. And so I think that's partly what's causing the neighbors to feel a little bit apprehensive as to what is it that we're actually going to end up with in the end. And that's why I'm bringing it up. It's not because I'm trying to make it more difficult for the applicant. I'm just saying, even for me, I'm like, so which one is it? Am I approving this or that or what? So if that's how I'm feeling, I can see how, you know, for the neighbors, it feels a little bit uncertain or there's a little bit of that apprehension as to that. So as long as we keep to the roof height as that maximum, then, you know, there might be a little bit of flexibility with the grading. So not necessarily the two feet down that we're going at, there might be a little bit to work with, right? So just want to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Krip, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I was going to kind of say what staff reiterated. We are approving a plan and a design. But when it goes through all of the internal stuff that happens, there's often changes.
And I totally get that, but I'm.
And I've also, I'm kind of thinking that maybe, we have Commissioner Fong here who was kind of questioning the need of both of those two.
G and H.
G and H.
Just the one, H.
I questioned both.
No, he questioned both.
The seven inches?
No, he questioned the condition.
G is the seven inches.
Right.
I can't find it right now.
That's right here. It's page fifteen.
Too many papers. Right.
Right. The condition, the special conditions on the approval.
Right. You questioned both of them as being very redundant. And now I'm kind of thinking he may be correct in that. And maybe we could let that one go, or let them both go and let it go the way it would have been otherwise. I'm not sure we really need them.
I think G is the seven inches, and that's the one that we wanted to keep.
Well, no, the seven inches.
That's G.
Is set.
No, that's G, that's.
So, okay.
Set in the plans even.
Exactly. So one thing.
Set in the plan.
One thing that we need to be absolutely clear here is that when we approve a set of plan, along with the conditions and along with the special conditions, the plan in itself becomes a public legal document. And that documents the heights of the building, the datum, how high it is compared to the existing house. That in itself, it's already a documentation that proves where and how that house need to be built. And that's what the surveyor is going to certify too. So whether or not we specified in G and H, whether it's seven inches or five eighty-five point four five, it's already been specified on the plan, and that's what the plan is supposed to do. Now, it is a redundant information, but it doesn't put any more restrictions on the applicant on number G. Now, however, should plan changes in the future, you know, then you need to change both the conditions as well as the plan. And that's one thing that we need to be mindful about because the plan is a living, breathing document. It changes over time should things, changes comes up. Now, understanding that there's an agreement between the neighbor and the applicant that there will be no more than five, no more than seven inches higher than the current house in terms of height and the datum, to be recorded no more than five eighty-five point four five or point five maximum. I think it's a very good assurance that this is not something that we would encroach upon. Right now, come to condition H, we need to be extremely mindful about one thing. It's that, you know, this commission here is to serve both the applicant as well as the neighbor a due process. A due process at which we not only serve to this particular applicant and this neighbor, but as well as everybody else that comes before us, right? So whatever process that we approve, whatever things that we agreed upon, things that we do for this particular project has to be the same and be consistent across many projects. So I think it's unconventional for me to be reading a special condition that it certifies, you know, the slab or the first floor height because we just don't do that. We do that for all the other projects that will certify the maximum height.
Yeah, I'm not having an issue with H, so I'm not sure why you're talking to me. But I'm just talking about G, so, and we were talking about G and H. So I think the G, to me, actually provides more flexibility because we're saying, on one hand, we're saying the plans are what we're approving, they're public and everything, and so it's redundant. But then on the other hand, we're saying, actually, there's some amount of flexibility with the interior. So if we say, as long as it's that seven, maximum seven inches higher, I think that's good to have as a condition. H, I'm kind of not sure. I feel like that's adding extra even to our staff in terms of time and who comes out, because somebody has to come out, they have to review.
It's both.
Has to come back, and so I was going to ask about that too, but I kind of got sidelined just in terms of how much more work is that to be done in terms of the applicant as well as the staff? Like, what are we looking at realistically?
I mean, so it sounds like there's going to be, you know, H puts an extra pressure, or, well, let me rephrase. H puts an extra condition, an extra piece of certification that the applicant has to do as part of the construction. And also, the staff has to look at extra documents and put in extra time to record these conditions and certifications from the surveyor. Again, I think we go back to the same thing over and over again. I think, you know, is this something that we normally do? Is this something that we would do for this project, the same as Indiana projects that we do? I think this is something that we all have to discuss among this commission. Because whatever we do for this, we have to do it for the next and the previous ones. Right.
And if I can, I did ask a question of the staff, if the staff can just kind of just take us through how much extra that is. I think that would be helpful, just to have that information.
Right, so Chair Fong was correct. So essentially, the onus falls on the applicant to have the survey done, added time and cost on their end. And then city staff would then verify, so that is taking a look at that certification and comparing it against the plans. It's not a lot of work, but it's certainly, it was meant to be a protection measure for both parties. I get that it is a bit redundant. We do have the Sheet A4.0. This is the legal document. These are legal plans. It does establish the maximum height. So my original answer or testimony earlier was that, you know, essentially, the conditions and the plans go hand in hand. This is written in, you know, in the condition, and this is on. know, in the condition and this is on the plans. They're there. Staff is able to handle working with the plans and ensuring compliance. This was just one more step to try to make, make all parties feel comfortable. And I understand why the appellant, or the applicant, rather, would not want to do that, because it is added cost.
Okay, thank you. And, and I would agree that I don't think I would necessarily want to add in that extra. I think it, you know, already what's been worked through has been, you know, as long as we make sure to keep that seven inch height. And I think that's more than, again, it looks like it's actually opening up even more than what's currently there in terms of the view. So hopefully, that will work out better. But personally, yeah, I think H is probably not necessary. It's just adding extra burden.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Davis?
I chime in with the, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And I'm in favor of the project probably dropping H. But despite all the work, and I'm glad the neighbors are happier now, I just want to bring up one point. And that's that this is mostly stemmed from the fact that somebody said that the impact to the view was significant. And it wasn't. So a lot of work has been put in to something that, on a standard that we don't hold other households to, other applicants, their, the impact was probably greater than this and their projects were approved. So at, at the end of the day, the applicant's private property rights have been squashed. Our staff has gone through round and round and round of changes. I'm glad everybody's happy and I said I'm going to approve it. But we have, like Commissioner Fung has said, we have to be mindful of the past and the future as well. And I would hate for, to see this be setting new, a set of expectations of what we do. As we mentioned earlier tonight, views are not protected by law. We are very mindful of them. We don't want anybody's views to be destroyed. But private property rights reign over the view. And so we have to be mindful of that. Absolutely. So I just needed to say that.
Ms. Quip?
Yeah, I absolutely, totally agree with Commissioner Davis. And I think it's very nice that we have all been able to work together so that everyone is happy. However, views are not protected. And I've got to tell you that in Millbrae, we do so, so much to help both parties. And if it was another city, they would not have done this much, because they are not protected. So.
Table?
And eliminating H.
Without condition, special condition H.
Right.
But keeping G.
Hmm?
Keeping G.
Keeping G.
You want to keep G?
Second.
I'd be fine with both of them, but I'll be okay.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Joe. Do we take the votes? Do a roll call? Sorry, everybody's snowing?
Everybody's snowing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five to nothing, subject to a 10 days' right of appeal. The project's been approved. Thank you very much.
I, I can't believe we've done this. I cannot believe we have spent this much time on this. It's lucky I wasn't here the other time.
Did I say it right?
And the city, and the city council, because I watched both of them.
Yeah. The meeting is still going on. For those, for the neighbors, would you please exit the room safely and quietly? Ladies and gentlemen, please exit the room quietly. We still have another project to approve. Ladies and gentlemen, please exit the room quietly. Thank you. One thing for staff, I'm sorry, one more thing. I mentioned 10-day right to appeal. Is it still appealable? So is there still a 10-day right to appeal period?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, make sure I'm not lying.
What did you do?
Whether or not the 10-day appeal still applies, because we were mandated.
Yeah, yeah.
The planning commission.
Oh, Jesus Christ.
Okay, so, are we done with all the?
Close the door.
Okay, public hearing, 7B, 375 LaPrenda, design review permit to allow the renovation additions of the lower level of a two-story residence and a setback exception to allow less than the minimum required upper floor setback and floor area ratio exception to allow a floor area greater than 55% for a single-family residence located in the single-family home residential, Awon Zoning District. This is a continue from August 19, 2019. Mr. Feeling?
Yes. This project is located on a triangular-shaped lot near the cul-de-sac of LaPrenda, east of Del Centro, on a ridge within the southwest corner of the Highland subdivision. The site sits on a 13,050 square foot corner lot, zoned, single-family residential, identified in the general plan as low-density residential. To the north rear and side of the property is open space. The subject property is located on a lot with a steep south-to-north downward slope in the backyard. There is 8,208 square feet area of slope greater than 30% and an easement in the backyard near the rear property line. The easement is 2,305 square feet, thus reducing the net site area available for development by 9,208 square feet, leaving 3,842 square feet of net site area available for development. Staff notes that the building FAR is an existing, non-conforming due to the steep slope of the lot and the easement existing on the property. This is the site of the building, the property from the street level. The proposed project would renovate and repair or damage single-family residence from a fire that occurred in November 2019. The project would also renovate the crawl space and open foundation pier area to create a lower-level floor and renovate the main floor of a two-story, single-family residence. The proposed project, specifically, the project would renovate the existing crawl space. And as I mentioned that before, I have my notes here that's repeating this stuff. Basically, the, the lower level, the new lower level in the back of the, the house would be enclosed, creating approximately 1,378 square feet. And there would be an addition of a deck of approximately 158 square feet. The project also includes renovating the interior of the existing main floor of the two-story, single-family residence. The existing 2,911 square foot story, story residence renovation, approximately 1,378 square foot addition would result in a new gross floor area totaling approximately 4,289 square feet, all within the existing building footprint. The existing residence is a two-story, single-family house with a two-car garage and a lower floor consisting of crawl space, storage area, and open area with foundation piers. The existing ground-level main floor contains a two-car garage from entrance, front entrance and driveway, a library, kitchen, hallway, living rooms, three bedrooms with closets, two bathrooms, an existing uncovered deck at the right elevation to the east, and a decked stairway to the lower level behind the garage. The proposed project would enclose and renovate the lower-level open area with foundation piers into a new lower-level habitable area. The new lower level would consist of two bedrooms with closets and bathrooms, a family room with fireplace, and access to a lower-level deck, office with closet, and hallway to staircase up to the main floor. The remaining area would consist of crawl spaces and a slab foundation for the garage above. The new main floor would consist of a three-car garage, entryway, kitchen open to the living room with fireplace, laundry closet, and three bedrooms with closets, three bathrooms, and a hallway to the stairway connecting to the lower level. There is also an east-facing uncovered deck accessed by sliding doors from both the living room and master bedroom. The roof will be a combination 212 and flat roof design and have three skylights and four sun tunnels. Neighbor consultation forms were sent out to all adjacent property owners. There were three of them. Two of the adjacent property owners sent in letters of support, and one was sent a certified mail receipt due to no response. This project is requesting a setback exception and an FAR exception. The upper floor setback exception is requested to renovate the lower level to create habitable space. Just to clarify for planning commission, this is more of, we're calling it a step back, in a sense, because the, the, the actual floor that's being hab, that's being created in the lower floor is actually above seven feet from existing grade. And so normally, once it reaches that seven-foot height, it would need to step back. So in order to, to design the house so that it would fit within the building footprint and integrate better with the home, the applicant is creating the exterior wall that's flush with the existing main floor level. It's, it's easier to see in the, in the elevations, which I'll be showing. In addition, there's an FAR exception that's being requested. This is due to the existing non-conforming FAR due to the steep slope, greater than 30% slope. That needs to be subtracted from the net developable site and also the easement area that needs to be subtracted. Because of the special circumstances applicable to the subject property, including size, triangular shape, topography, greater than 30% slope, large easement, the hillside location and its surroundings, and there, basically, there's findings that can be made. That strict application of the zoning regulation would deprive the subject property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under the identical zone classification. So this is the location of the, the subject property. And there are some existing homes along the hillside that have similar characteristics as far as steep slopes, similar lot size and area, and similar, they were designed similarly in, in terms of having lower multiple levels and lower floors and not having the setbacks built in with these homes. So this is another aerial photo that shows some of these other homes. This is the 375 LaPrenda located here. This is one, let's see, 195 LaPrenda, or 385 LaPrenda. Then we have 395 LaPrenda here. You can see that the, the steep slope and how the home was constructed, lower levels, no, no step backs, basically. The, the, they're all the homes on the hillside are designed this way. This, this home here, 370 LaPrenda, has multiple, multiple floors and no step backs. In addition, we have over here, 60 Arroyo Seco, 50 Arroyo Seco, and 40 Arroyo Seco, very similar to the 375 LaPrenda in that there's steep slopes at the back. And the home has a, sort of a single-floor main level at the, the road, at the road elevation, and then lower levels down the hill, multiple levels. In particular, these two sites here that are highlighted received FAR exceptions and conditional use permits that were granted to allow FAR greater than 55%. So on these two sites, the commission made the determination to allow the applicants to use the entire lot to calculate their developable site for, for FAR, for the construction of these two So the, the 395 LaPrenda use permit was approved June 16, 2008, granting FAR greater than 55%. And then 60 Arroyo Seco on April 17, 1995, there was also an FAR variance granted for, to allow FAR greater than 55% on the lot. This site, this is the site plan. The red box indicates the, the area of the construction, the renovation. It's basically, essentially, the, the same building footprint as existing. This is the existing lower floor plan. So the lower floor plan includes this, these crawl space areas here. What this slide shows here is the, the new lower floor plan, and it highlights the area where the exception, step back or setback exception is being requested. We're calling it a step back in this case because it's really just the construction, the, the extending of the exterior wall on the main floor down to the grade to create the livable space down here. So these are going to be the two, the west left side setback exception requesting zero, zero-foot setback for linear feet of 43 feet, 11 inches, where 10 feet setback is required. And then on the east right side, also a zero setback or step back for 28 feet, 7 inches, where 4 feet step, step back or setback is required. This is the existing main floor indicating by the, the walls that'll be, that are going to be removed and for the renovation of the main floor. This is the new main floor renovation. And it, this shows the, the new driveway, so that there, this home will have a three-car garage, meeting our residential guidelines for parking requirement. So it'll have a three, full three-car garage. This is the existing right elevation. Here you get a clearer picture indication of the , the steepness of the slope. And then this is the crawl space area that's going to be, that would be infilled. So you can see the, the piers here, and then the existing ground floor. So from the front of the house, it, it looks like it's one story, but from the, in the rear, you'll have lower levels here. And this is the existing west left elevation, which does have, already does have this exterior wall built out. Here we have the proposed right, east and left west elevations. This shows the renovation, or the, the new lower floor habitable space located here. And this shows the, the new small porch or deck area that will be added here. This is an existing deck. This is the existing front elevation. And existing north rear elevation. And these are the proposed front and rear elevations. This is the existing roof plan. And this is the proposed roof plan, very similar 212 roof plan. There's a slight pitch to it. And then these are the locations of the new, what do you call them?
Sunlight.
Sun, skylights and tunnels, sun tunnels. These are the sun tunnels, these are the skylights.
Sun tunnels.
This is the rendering. Staff believes that this design and, and the, the colors and materials fit in very well with the, the surrounding vegetation and, and neighboring homes. It's a more of a contemporary, modern design, but it's still, has basically, essentially the same roof plan. And the applicant will. And the applicant will be doing new landscaping, vegetation along the front here. It's already a existing non-conforming front yard. You'll note, notice that there's a very shallow area as far as like the driveway and where the garages are. And this is due to the steepness of the slope and the way the existing home is designed. So as was mentioned before, this is a design review permit that's required because of the extensive renovation that's being done, the, the added lower level floor and the, the request for the setback and the FAR exception. And it needs to meet both findings one and two within the Millbrae Code and for design review findings A through D. At this time, staff is recommending that the planning commission review the project and consider the public testimony and the findings as presented and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for design review to allow the renovation addition of the lower level of a two-story residence, a setback exception to allow less than the minimum required upper floor setbacks, and a floor area ratio exception to allow a floor area greater than 55% for a single-family residence located in the single-family residential zoning district at 375 La Prenda, subject to the attached conditions of approval. I'm available to answer questions and I believe we have the architect also here that's available to answer questions.
Does any commissioner wish to ask staff questions at this point? Anyone?
For the storyboard and the architectural rendering, is that, is that off scale because that on the plans it said 20-foot garage, car garage. It looks like, just from the picture, it looks like it may, may not be to scale or
I think it might, it might be just the image as it's put on the, on the, on the PowerPoint presentation, but the, there is sort of an angle, the site does have sort of a, an angle to it so that, I don't know, from the beginning you can, we can look at the, the site photo. I could let the architect answer that if he has additional information, but it's, I think it's the view, the rendering of the view is from an angle, so that's why it looks
Anything else, Commissioner Wong?
And just to clarify again, this is a, it's an unusual lot because a lot of the property in the back is, has an excessive, exceeding slope, so it's not allowed to build on that. Is that correct?
Thank you, Senator.
So that's basically why it compresses the building area?
Yes. Yes, for, for this site, any slope 30% or greater is subtracted out of the lot and then any easement area is subtracted out of the lot plus 10%. And that reduces the, the developable site. And so that's why you get the, the larger FAR number, you know, that it's way, way over 55%. Like, right now though, the existing FAR is over 55%. However, what the applicants are proposing as far as the redevelopment of the, or development of the renovation of the, the main floor and adding that lower floor, it's all within the building, existing building footprint. And it's similar in design and style as other homes along the hillsides there as was shown in the, in the photos. There, there is precedence for approving projects in this area on these steep slopes where the, the FAR exceeds the 55%.
Is there a, it's on the table with the allowable square footage, the zoning compliance requirement, the existing, the proposed? Is that correct, that maximum lot coverage is 50%? Because wouldn't the 30% of slope requirements, wouldn't that reduce that maximum lot coverage? So the actual, actual maximum lot coverage is far less?
So the, the, the actual reduction of, of developable site only applies to FAR. It doesn't apply to the, like the lot coverage. So the, the FAR calculation, that, that's, when you take the, for the lot coverage, you take the entire total lot square footage?
Without any easement calculations?
Correct.
Okay.
So just theoretically, if this entire lot, 13,050 was a normal flat lot, then the maximum floor area ratio, do we have a number for that? Can you do that really quickly?
2663.
32.8%.
So it would be 32.8%. Oh, but what about the 4289 then?
I just took 4289 out of the whole lot and that's 32.8%.
Right, right. So if, if it were, assuming it was a flat lot and we did the calculation, it would be 4,289 divided by 13,050 and you would have a FAR of 33%.
Which would be allowable? So there are circumstances that we should consider because it's an unusual lot that they allow for this exception?
Yes. That's, that's staff's recommendation, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to make a problem. On the proposed proj, I just wanted, I think it's supposed to be November 2018?
Sorry. Could you repeat that?
On page one, second line.
The second line, you put the fire that occurred November 2019.
Which means the fire hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, yeah, let's, staff will correct that. It should be November 2018.
It's not a big deal.
2017.
That was the 2017?
2017.
2017. Yeah, staff will correct that.
2017.
2017.
Almost two years ago.
Yep.
Anything else, Mr. Quip?
Thank you for that. That's, staff will make that correction.
Mr. Fielding? I've got a question. On the page six of your staff report where the chart that describes all the FAR, the existing is 2911 on the FAR. Is that correct, Mr. Fielding?
Yes, that's what we have. That's, that's from the applicant's project information, plan sheet.
Do we have records of that ourselves? Meaning, what I'm getting at is, is the 21, it's 2911 square feet. Is that fully permitted and approved when the time, at the time when it was built?
We, we, staff can double-check that if you'd like to on that.
Absolutely. Because, and here's the rationale for that. The project in front of us is asking for a massive FAR exception. I mean, 112%. Now, I understand it is an unusual lot, right, with a very big slope, but it is what it is. I mean, otherwise we're setting a very dangerous precedent so approving 111, 112% exception on the FAR. It's a very big number, it's a very alarming number. What I'm getting at is, this is a remodeling permit that they're seeking, right? It's a design review permit to allow for renovation in addition, not a new construction.
Right.
Right? In cases where we've done in the past where renovations in addition, if some of the existing square footage were permitted before, then they stand, right?
Right.
So what I need to know is the 2911, are they fully permitted?
Yeah, staff, staff can research that for you. The, I do know that, looking at the history file, the, the, the deck, the exterior deck was part of the original building. So that side deck, drawing here.
There's a huge stack in the rear.
Yeah, if you see that...
And what is the square foot?
This location, this deck here?
Yes.
This was part of the original construction. And then the, the original building footprint is, was, was, was part of, was included in that. But as far as the actual numbers and whether we have the numbers, unfortunately, some of these buildings that are built so long ago, when we look at the permit history, especially for like when they were newly constructed, like in the 1940s and 30s, some, we just don't have that, that data, the, the new, the constructed number. They, they put like new building, you know, new residents and the permit has no other information, so, but staff could double-check and, double-check and verify, see if we have that number in the file.
So the 4289 includes the deck. Mr. Fielding, is that correct?
For, the 4289...
I would imagine it includes the deck.
Would include the deck, yeah, the portion of it that's over seven feet.
Which is everything.
Right.
Right.
So I have here San Mateo County assessor's data. The home was built in 1957 and the base area square footage was 1,920. And that's what the San Mateo County assessor had.
Do we still have?
That's, so that, that, what the assessor has, they have, they have like the building footprint, they, they may not have multiple floor, they don't have multiple floors, so you could take a look, staff could take a look at the permit history on it and see if we have a, a number of the total square footage. But this is what the assessor data had.
I think it's an important exercise for us to go through to establish what is the legal square footage of the property that is fully permitted. Now, if this is a renovation in addition permit that they're seeking, it's a massive FAR exception, 112%, right? So we need to be mindful about those numbers. But, you know, we can discuss that a little bit further down the road. Anything else, Mr. Fielding? Any other questions? Okay, can we have the applicant, please?
Hello, council members and city staff. My name is Gabe Gonzalez. I'm a local builder and a longtime resident and community member of the City of Millbrae. Thank you for the opportunity to review our project tonight. This house is located at 375 La Prenda and sits at the end of a cul-de-sac overlooking the airport. The house burned in November 2017 and since then it's been cleaned up and prepared for its next phase in life. The existing house is a three-bedroom, two-bath home with a two-car garage on one level. We are proposing to add a one-car garage to the existing main level and add two bedrooms, two baths and a, and a family room below the existing house. We will end up with a five-bedroom, four-and-a-half-bath house with a three-car garage. The house, the design is a modern, contemporary design that exemplifies today's styles and direction of architecture. There are more homes being built with this design than any other in our Bay Area. Please consider and approve our home and design so we can finish beautifying this Millbrae cul-de-sac. Thank you.
This is Andrea Costanzo, she's the designer of record.
Okay, would, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Two things, the number of the assessor's information of the existing house, maybe it's because also we, there was supposedly a patio that was, it's covered, but it's all, everything counts towards floor area in this project. So every, you know, the numbers, the existing condition counts, there's nothing that we can see that it was done with, without permits, as far as we know. And the other thing is the alarming floor area ratio is because also the existing house right now, it's sitting on columns and one of the things we're doing is we're trying to shear the walls all the way to the foundation, which creates, we have a two-story in the back, so even if we don't do anything, you, we, that space will count because we want to make the house better in terms of, you know, the structure of the house. So we are proposing a lower floor and that area that we're enclosing and making, right? Is you can superbe on that one?
Yeah, the, the structural integrity will be extremely elevated by building it down because you're basically shearing it down. Right now, it's sitting like this. Now, if you build it and fill it in underneath, you're just reinforcing the entire thing all the way down. And regarding the, any additions, I extensively went through the entire crawl space, footing by footing, I have a picture with dimensions between each, each and every footing, grade beam and tie beam, and all those footings are all original. There's no way there was an addition made to that house. So that was all original, for sure. But as far as what we are proposing, that is a, a much safer build for the house and it's going to be, it's going to provide a lot more structural integrity to the actual home and we will be reinforcing almost the entire perimeter foundation.
Right now, does it sit on pier or does it sit on the L footing?
Both. So there are a combination of piers and spread footings.
And the spread footing, is it on the perimeters?
No, the, the piers are on, mostly on the back and then they're tied with tie beams.
Okay, so the front of the house, portion of it would be on spread footing?
Correct.
And the rear, it's on piers with tie beams?
That's what is right now and we will be reinforcing those. And the front, the front is anchored and we're not going down lower. And so we'll, we'll be reinforcing everything on the rear, which is where the stress is going to be. The front is anchored and it's on grade. So the front, there is no stability issues. But the rear definitely has, you know, stability questions and that's where we would definitely be reinforcing.
So, if I may, so the rear, it's on piers and grade beams and you're saying that by building walls and to shear all the way down, you provide more structural integrity, which I get, I understand. What do you intend to do with the foundation when you shear all the way down to the grade?
Reinforce it.
A little bit more detail?
So we'll probably be, so I, I, when we were waiting over here, I, I, I pulled up a picture. If I can show you, maybe I can send it to Sam. When, the day that I went out there, this is really going to clarify your questioning. And so I did, I dimensioned every single pier and footing and grade beam on a plan on one of these, I think it's that plan. And I even show exactly where we are adding on you, it'll give you a really clear picture. Can I send it to Sam and then he can put it up on the screen? Is that okay?
I, sure, but I, do you have copies of it that we can look at?
I, I, I don't, but I can put it on the screen and you can clearly see.
If you can put it on the screen?
I wish I would have thought about it and I could have, and I could have made copies of, of this, of this picture, but I, but I didn't, I apologize. But this really clears up a lot. Sam, I'm going to email it to you and then hopefully you can put it up on the screen.
Okay.
...that is existing and the concept of the earth, if there's...
It's that one there. Remember, that's the one that I showed you? I'm going to email it to you.
One, one conversation at a time.
And hopefully, oh, really?
Okay, while, while you're doing that, does any other commissioner have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Davis? Mr. Wong?
I just agree that, you know, we need to, you know, if we do allow this larger house, we need to make sure that it's, doesn't, you know, present a hazard to neighboring properties and the homeowner herself, that it's, has a secure foundation and not sure how far the footings go down, but...
So, so this, this house was, sorry about that.
Take, take your time.
So this house was obviously a burned house.
Yes.
Now, I can, I can go in and probably get an over-the-counter permit to redo this house, but I'm taking the more responsible approach to this and designing something more responsible and better for the community and actually reinforcing it all the way down. It's not more to add more or, or trigger any type of, of an FAR situation, but it's more to be responsible with the actual build and actually ground that house a lot better than it is now. But I can really just go and get a building permit over the counter and get started with this, with this, the rehab of this house. It's a burned house, I can rehab it exactly how it is, but that's really not the responsible thing that, that I should do with it. I should actually get the proper design and ground it all the way down.
While I appreciate you, you know, putting into plan and go through the entire planning, planning process, that's not, you know, exactly the reason why we should approve it immediately. planning process, that's not, you know, exactly the reason why we should approve it immediately, right? You know, we look at all the criterias that come before us and we make decisions fairly and just among all applicants, so I wanna make sure you understand that. Ms. Quib?
Yeah, so, the FAR that is there is exactly what was there before, but there's no rooms or anything downstairs, right?
There's one.
The note, right? Like, that's, so that's why...
Oh, there is still one?
There's one room underneath there, correct.
But we're adding rooms?
We're adding, correct, we're adding...
We're adding rooms, but they were already counted in the FAR because they were high? Is that why we were counting them?
The, the existing, because it's open, doesn't count towards floor area, but it's, the house is on the, you know, holding with post right now. So we want to make the structure stronger.
No, I, I understand that, I'm just trying to get a better grasp because we are not supposedly intensifying the FAR. Is that right?
Correct.
To staff?
No, I mean, the, the construction is all within the existing building footprint, so that area, that rearview photo, you see there where the, the pilings are, that's the area that's gonna be, the habitable space is gonna be created there.
So, we're...
It's not expanding the, the building or intensifying it from, expanding it further...
I understand, but if it was under seven feet, I mean, if it was just crawl space, would you still have counted it? Or is it because it's over so many feet?
It's counted the full, as a, as a full floor in that lower level, because it's livable space.
As it's high.
Right, right.
Under the new.
Yeah, under the new, under the existing floor above there. So the, the way the crawl space calculation works, it's, if, if it's greater than five vertical feet measured from exterior grade, then it's counted. If it's under five, it's not, not counted, yeah, so...
Okay, I knew there was something to that, that's why I'm...
Right, but, you know, in this particular case, currently, it wasn't being part of the square footage because the downstairs, I use the word downstairs a little loosely here because, you know, you really can access it other than going outside the house to get to it, because it's just dirt over piers, right? A house over the piers, you know, with dirt underneath. It's not covered right now.
Right, right, that's not counted, yeah.
That's right, but if you were to cover them up with walls, then it would've been counted.
Right, so the, the floor below the main floor there, where the, the applicant is creating that, that lower floor, that's counted as a full floor, it's, it's not, and so that, that area is included in the FAR.
If you enclose it?
Yes.
That's right.
Yeah, once you enclose it, our definition of it is the exterior, from exterior wall to exterior wall, the enclosure, that's when it becomes floor area and it's counted.
What my question is, is since it's not enclosed now, we're not really counting it, right?
Correct, that's correct.
We are still counting it even if it's not enclosed because of the height.
If it's not enclosed, we don't count it.
It's not counted right now.
It's not counted, it's not a floor.
This is without...
The day you enclose it, we count it.
But I understood that it was over the FAR already.
Yes.
Yes, and that's why my earlier question to Mr. Fielding as to why certain square footage was already in the property and whether or not they were permitted.
Right, so just, just to add a little bit, 'cause I was thinking about this, so under the assessor record, we have roughly, what was the number again, I think, 1,950 square feet. What we, well, staff will double-check is to what extent the garage and/or exterior deck were calculated as part of the assessor's record. Of course, we need to look at the building permit record, but you can have discrepancies between the two.
And they, and they vary all the time.
Right, so, just, just between the garage and the exterior deck, that's about 900 square feet, it start, if, if those were not part of the assessor record, that starts to bring us right back into the, the ballpark of what the amount of existing square footage that this home had and was likely permitted. And then the other part I would, just to clarify, is, you're correct, the, the, the lower level that's open, that's open now is not counted as floor area, they wanna convert that into habitable space. Those walls, I think when we say it won't go above and beyond the footprint, it's that those walls would align with the floors above, but once it's enclosed, it would count as floor area, which takes them well over the maximum amount.
Right. Any other questions for the applicant before we move on? Okay, seeing none? Thank the applicant, if you can just stay close, we might have questions for you later.
Thank you, applicant.
Public comment? We have two speaker slips. Ms. Pamela Hansen?
I really just was confirming, this is actually the first, I've not received past notifications of what the plans were, so I'm at 355 La Prenda. I will say that we've been very happy since the folks have come onto the property, they've, they've done a lot of renovation just to the grounds around the house, and in over 40 years at our residence, we were never able to work with those neighbors in the past, so we appreciate it very much. With that, I just wanted to confirm again that I believe what I heard was that the, what the proposed roof height would be, and particularly the side of the roof that does have a slope, high slope to it, and if that was, yes, going to be staying at the, at the current existing height. And what is that current height? Just curious about that.
They can address that later, but if you can address your comment to the commission?
Oh, okay.
So you just wanna get a confirmation on the roof ridge?
Yes.
That is currently, and how that would compare to what the proposal would be?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, in particular to the sloped area of the roof, that is...
And we'll have the applicant address that later.
Okay.
Thank you. Just keep that in mind. Noah Gonzalez?
Is this, is this thing on?
The mic is on.
Go ahead. Hello, everyone. My name is Noah Gonzalez and I live a few blocks from La Prenda. I am in full support of this project and can honestly tell you that I have seen my dad build and beautify many houses and communities in this area. I hope you improve this project as it will enhance our great city of Millbrae. This house has sat in its burned state for almost two years, and I think we can all agree that it's time to bring it back to life. Please approve this project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I only have two speaker slips. Does anybody else wish to speak publicly with regard to this project? Seeing none, I'd like to have the applicant rebuttal. Would you like to address the question raised by Ms. Pamela Hansen earlier?
So the question, the question was what the roof height was?
What the roof height currently is and how does that compare to your proposed roof ridge?
So it, it's gonna be exactly the same. So basically, we're proposing to remove the roof as-is and replacing it. It's gonna be almost completely as-is, we did do a few slight modifications, but nothing to increase the height of the roof lines. And I also gave her my business card and I can email her the plans as well.
Stop.
Stop, second.
Yes, Ms. Quib?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I run the meeting, not you. So first of all, did you provide the plans to all the neighbors already? Because she said that she didn't get the plan.
So I provided the plans to everyone that asked. I did also drop off letters to most of the neighbors, which I always do. I've dropped off letters of introduction with my business card, they have my direct cell number, my direct office number, and my email. So, almost all the neighbors from six houses up all the way down to me have that notification. And if anybody did not get it, I apologize, but they can, my phone is always on for most of my neighbors.
Okay. Please stay on the stage, on the podium for a second. Ms. Quib?
Yes, my question is, did you not get a notice for the public hearing?
I got the notice for tonight.
You got the notice for tonight? Oh, okay.
Did you, did you not see the plan?
You, you said you hadn't seen the plan.
I had not been noticed.
Are you an adjacent neighbor? Are you next door or is there a house in between, two doors up? That's why.
Should've been notified.
Yeah, not adjacent.
She's not adjacent, oh.
Okay.
So, early on in the, in the projects, the adjacent neighbors are noticed, so you not, you don't touch their property, so you wouldn't get the plans necessarily ahead of time? If maybe you'd got, if you had seen his business card, you guys might've talked, he was actually going farther out than you would normally have to, but that's why you weren't noticed, you know, last year or whatever, months ago. But for this, this meeting, we go 300 feet out, so that's when you got the notice. But it's 'cause you don't actually touch him is why you didn't get the plan straight away.
Okay. Then we have one more speaker that wish to speak?
I don't know.
He said that he wants to speak. Just come to the podium and...
Oh, he is?
Yes. Mr. Eric Wong?
Good evening, I'm Eric Wong.
Speak to the mic, please, thank you.
I'm living in 350 La Prenda, where it goes the street a little bit up on the hill. I never got a second notice from a yellow card for tonight, and I just saw the lampposts at the top of the hill, and I never got any drawing. This is the first time I'm here.
Okay. Is that all you wanna say?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The, could staff respond to the...
Yeah, please.
So, 350 La Prenda is, is located, the second home above 375 La Prenda, across the street, but two homes up.
Right.
And so it's not directly, it's not considered adjacent to the subject property, however, as he mentioned, he, he received the, the flyer and the information on the street, and we did, we do the 300-foot noticing, but that's why he, he didn't get the, directly the plans for the, for the project.
Okay. Very well. Any other questions for the applicants? Anybody? Commissioner comments, discussions? Who wants to begin? Raise your hand.
I'll start.
Okay. Commissioner Davis?
It, it looks like a beautiful project. A house sitting there, burned up for nearly two years is a sad thing, and I would like to see it come back. The FAR does look ridiculous when you look at it, ooh, 112, where did that come from? But when you then realize how much of the lot is in steep slope and that there's an easement back there as well, and how much land there's actually to work with, and that you're not going out, you're not going back, you're just boxing it in, and that there is other homes nearby that are like that, I, I'm okay with this 112. Not every 112, this 112.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Anybody else who wishes to speak next? Ms. Joe?
Oh, I would just agree, I don't need to draw it out, everything you said. And it won't impact the back, and the front appeal either, so I think it's not changing and it'll be definitely, obviously, a plus to the neighborhood, so I, I think more power to you. And obviously, we're not gonna do this all the time, it is a huge, you know, huge FAR, but it is a large lot, it is gonna be filling in, in essence, what's there, and it'll make it more functional too, as a home, so I think I, I'm fine with it.
Who wants to speak next? Ms. Wong, Mr. Wong?
Yeah, I know that this appears to be an unusual-shaped lot, so that would grant it grounds in my eyes to have an exception for the FAR. If it was a normal sloped lot, then it would be well within the FAR, so I see that, you know, that's a consideration. But I do see that concern about just the stability of that house, to me, that one giant pier looks like it's supported by a bunch of stilts and it looks really tenuous there. We wanna make sure that this building is not creating a hazard for the occupants and for the nearby residences, and we know that even in some parts of Millbrae, there's slope stability problems on these hills, so that needs to be addressed. I'm not sure if we can request there to be, you know, there's already been done a geotechnical evaluation and a structural...
Yes, staff, staff can answer that question. Yes, there has been a geotechnical study, has been completed and been reviewed by, peer reviewed by city staff, and the, the design and the approach that the applicant is, is making is consistent and feasible to, for, for the approach that they're, they're proposing.
Frankly, with this one pier, I see why there's a need for a share to help with the lateral movement, make sure it doesn't fall over, 'cause just having the one pier is no, there's no stability for lateral movement. And it's amazing that this hasn't been condemned right now. I mean, it's really dangerous.
I walked in.
But we, yeah, we need to just make sure there's assurances that it doesn't create a hazard for the occupants and the... I'm not sure if just breaking it up to code will do that, or that's part of the process?
I would imagine that's part of the building permitting process, you know, in terms of geotechnical, foundation design, framing design, structural walls, those are the things that would ensure the stability of the building. And if the footing, I think we would imagine that some sort of a footing analysis would have to be done in order to make sure that, you know, the existing footing is up to code. If not, then strengthening or replacement would be required because this is a relatively unusual circumstances from a structural perspective?
Absolutely, and, you know, they've already done some of their beginning due diligence with their own engineering reports, certainly when they submit for the, for the plan check, for the, the construction drawings, we, the city will have third-party consultants look at all the structural engineering and comment on the reports that they've provided to ensure it's adequate, so that'll be fully vetted.
And, and the thing that, one thing that concerns me here in the construction part of it is that I, myself have done a number of hillside construction, this is a steep one, one of the more extreme cases. My question is, and it's probably likely for the applicant down the row in terms of construction method, is that if you choose to replace the foundation, and should that become required, what shoring would be done and how it would be done, and it would probably have to be documented relatively well, you know, as a set of plans? Because imagine you have to change the foundation on a house that's sitting, how high is that? 15, 20 feet above ground?
It's huge, more...
I'm sorry, how much? Full two-story, I mean, 16, 18 feet above ground. There's no difference between 18 and 20 in that sense. You know, from that perspective, the method of construction and how shoring will need to be done and how it needs to take place, whether or not you do it by section or you do it a full shoring, it, it's a dangerous construction, that's all I can say, right? So I would imagine part of the condition should be approved, that shoring would have to be part of the consideration? Otherwise, you know, the, the stability and the safety of the construction would become a bit of an issue. Does OSHA permit come into play? Director Meister?
I'm sorry, say, say...
Does OSHA permit come into play? I mean, this is a hillside construction, I think the excavation would likely to be greater than five feet?
Well, actually, we did have some conversations with the applicant prior to this meeting tonight because I wanted to understand the net effect of how much excavation would, would likely occur.
Would take place.
And apparently, and I can also have them speak to it, nothing is being taken off site, so the excavation is, is relatively minimal for this particular proposed project, and so, also, I think we were curious about the type of machinery that's gonna be needed to get back there.
Yeah.
And so I think because of the excavation being somewhat minimal, they're not gonna need the kind of heavy machinery that you'd expect, obviously, that was a concern about how you get there. But at the end of the day, you know, again, everything needs to be fully vetted throughout the structural plan check process.
Especially if excavation were to happen, you know, greater than five feet, or greater than five feet, right, then OSHA permit would certainly be required, as required by California state law. Ms. Quib?
Yeah, I, I did walk up there, and it was a scary sight, I've gotta tell ya. It is so steep, I don't know how anybody's gonna even be able to work there, actually, but...
It's gonna be tough.
The, yeah, the rendering is beautiful, absolutely gorgeous. Absolutely gorgeous.
Please, if you would take the podium.
So I rebuilt about 12 homes in the Oakland Hills, and this is not like the Oakland Hills. So I have done, I just want to let you know that I have done category 10 complexity-type of foundations. And this here, I do have a plan of access, have a plan of the spoils. We do intend on reinforcing the existing, not removing it, and building up some retainer walls for the spoils. So we will be backfilling the inside of that crawl space. So we won't be exporting anything. We'll probably be importing more than anything. So it's, it's, once you get down there, there is, on the right side of the house, there is a way to get a machine safely down. And that's my plan of access. So I understand what your concern is regarding shoring and so forth, but we do also have a plan for backup shoring down, down about 10 feet. You usually put some batter boards up to make sure you have no roll-off. But that will be used, we will be needing everything that comes out of the spoils, and we will be, we won't be digging trenches, we'll be digging piers. So, and the pier spoils, we'll be going back in the backfill. And then lastly, I do, I have had my T-110 OSHA trench permit for at least 20 years. So I am OSHA certified.
Very well. Good to know. I do have some comments with regard to the plan. It's a fire-burned-down house, and it's important for this house to be rebuilt and to be redone. I mean, it's dangerous sitting the way it is, and I'd like to see it done. The question I have is, you know, whether or not we can approve 112% FAR exception. I mean, that's a relatively large and alarming number. And that's why, that's why earlier in the, in the hearing process, I asked Mr. Fielding that whether or not the current FAR at 2911, it's fully permitted. Now, we've just got to keep this in mind. And I do understand that we're filling in an existing space, or a space that will have to be enclosed, one way or another, because I do understand the importance of sharing it and going all the way down and have the foundation replaced. You know, from a structural standpoint, that's about the only way to get it done. Right? And it's important, and I know that. But approving a 112% FAR, it's a relatively large number. Is there a way we could figure out, I mean, this is a renovation permit, not a tear-down, not a brand-new property. Can we dial it down, right, to what the permitted square footage would be, and allowing that, instead of going all the way to 112% FAR exception?
You know, I think that would take some substantial change from the project applicant, which you certainly are welcome to do. The other thing I was thinking, too, just if this helps, if the concern is that we don't know what the verified square footage is, we can certainly put a cap on what you may be willing to permit, subject to staff verifying that number. Now, on the flip side, one thought that occurred to me is if, for some reason, some portion of the house is not permitted, I could assume that that would have been part of an application to get that legalized. So there, we may be looking at what the cap is. So if this 2,911 actually represents the maximum amount of FAR, and they've done those calculations, so I'm comfortable with the numbers they're using. The question is whether that's been permitted or not. So, you know, the question about whether or not you're comfortable with 112 square feet...
112 percent?
I'm sorry, percent of the FAR, right? That's to the commission, in the form of what they're requesting on the ground, on the lower-level addition. If you're asking for that to be scaled down, such that you're at a different number, that's a conversation for you all.
Right, I understand. Personally, I'm more in favor of seeing, you know, the property being downed a little bit, from a square-footage perspective. I think 112% FAR exception is huge, and it's as dangerous precedence that we see. Now, I understand that this is a very different, you know, property, from a slope standpoint, and easement, and how steep it is. But also, at the same time, we've got to be mindful about what we do for this project, as well as for all the other project that comes before us, and what's going to come to us in the future, and whether or not, if anything, that's just come before and say we have a deep slope, then we just approve any FAR they want. It's a dangerous precedence. It's, it's an existing house, it's a renovation with an addition, so if we were to just give them, I mean, they don't necessarily have to take off any square footage that is currently being permitted, because it's grandfathered, in a way, right? So if we can work within the existing square footage that has already been there, I think I'll be more comfortable with it, instead of giving them even more square footage than this currently is.
I don't think I understood that, but I don't think I agree.
We don't understand...
What do you mean by just, just leave it?
So right now, it's, right now, it's 2,911 square feet.
Right.
That's what the house is.
With decks and garage and everything else.
Right.
It's not the habitable space, not the living space, not where they're hanging out, right? Yeah.
So this is the number that they have currently?
Right.
Okay? And this is already over the FAR limit, right? So if this number is permitted, I would say we keep it at that level, instead of growing the house even further.
No, I mean, there's an opportunity here to improve the house, and it's a gigantic lot. And it has a huge lot, and the steep slope, and an easement, and all of that sitting there. An opportunity waiting to happen. This is a rare situation. This isn't going to come up on every steep, on every sloped lot we have in Millbrae. There are, we have to take the real world and geography into our decisions, and this is special. And there is precedent. There are other homes that are far exceeding their FAR. But there's only going to be a handful of those lots at Millbrae. This isn't going to happen dozens of times. No way.
I think there's an opportunity also, that if they do, you know, renovate this house and build a lower level, then that will provide them opportunity to manage the property below with the grade and the landscaping and so forth. They'll, they'll want to manage that landscaping, because you'll have a view right outside that lower-floor window, and they'll want to manage it better. So it's probably even an enhancement to the environment and the landscaping.
I'm missing that.
It provides an incentive for them to manage that lot, that entire 13,000-square-feet better.
I would say, the size of the house, in terms of FAR, has nothing to do with managing the landscaping, however, but I understand your comment, but...
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's a very unique situation, because whether it was all permitted or not, it's there. And you are only enclosing. I mean, we're, nothing is being added. And I, 1955, maybe something has been added to it. But if it's been added, it's been added a lot of years ago. I mean, you can tell that's not a new addition. You know, it was added before we even did this FAR stuff. So I feel comfortable, because we're just filling in. And I think my house is probably over the FAR, if we were to count it. But it was there. You know, it was original. A lot of houses were built originally over the FAR of today's standards. I don't think we'd have this come up ever again.
I'm kind of a proponent for it. I mean, I think there's a trade-off. I mean, to keep the existing floor plan like this, I mean, I would suggest that that building should condemn the way it is. There needs to be improvements, there needs to be structural improvements and foundational improvements to this. And I think the trade-off in order to allow, or provide that incentive for them to update this is to allow them a little bit more exception for this renovation also.
Well, if they can save it.
Well, I'm sure they could save it. The question is, what needs to get in, right? And how big of a legal square footage we're going to give them, in order to do that?
Well, we've always said before, because we make an exception, even if it's a huge exception, that doesn't mean that it's going to set precedent.
What percentage of the lot that is greater than 30%? So 8,208 square feet of the lot out of 13,000 square feet. It's over 30%.
Right.
And none of them is counted, for a developable area?
It's...
Excuse me, one second.
Yeah, for FAR, for FAR, the, you, yeah, you deduct that area from the net developable site.
Okay. 61%. And then the easement is 2305. And that is a utility easement in the rear? That is located all the way in the rear of the property, right?
Yes.
On the bottom?
Down the bottom. 10 foot, yeah.
On the side.
No, it's this. The property is in the front, this way. So they'll take that out. Yeah, I don't know. It's a huge FAR exception, to me, from a numbers perspective.
If we don't do anything to the house, we don't add anything, the engineer will make us shear the downstairs, and that will enclose and be, and count superfloor area ratio. So in that case, we cannot do anything to the house at all. Because with the new codes and shear, and it will be, have to be transferred to the foundation, which then will have to enclose the whole downstairs. And then it adds to the floor area ratio.
Personally, I think we're all, majority is, at this point, kind of comfortable with the 112%. And I know it's not, it's never ideal to make exceptions, and this is a big exception, but it is a very unique situation, and I think we're capable of making exceptions without that becoming a precedent that we have to hold on to for every single house. So I think asking them to go back, there's no, there's no square footage we could give them that they could do. There's no square footage that we could give them that would work, so, you know, that would work for them, because it's already at 76%.
Well, it's, they're just closing in what's there.
Right. They're just closing in what's there, so...
I guess if anything at all, we need to be extremely mindful about the wording at which we approve this, if we were to approve it tonight, that, you know, there's the clear documentation that it has to do with a huge slope. From a percentage perspective, how many percent of the uncountable developable, developable space compared to the overall lot size, where this exception is justified?
We could do that, but it's also, the house is already there. You know, it's not like we're adding on. I think that's so unique, the difference.
There is a very dangerous situation with that, because, you know, this is a downslope property. Imagine this is an upslope property, where the rear is actually higher than the front. You know, for the sake of just enclosing it, you know, you could excavate out and take dirt out and create additional space. Where in those cases, that, in this case, in those cases, where the exception should not apply, because it's not for stability reasons. Right? So, you know, I wouldn't necessarily agree with that, but however, in the case that, you know, where the undevelopable space, in this case, especially on a downslope property, right, that shear wall had to be created, one way or another, in order for stability, for stability to happen, right, in order to pass engineering, that these walls are necessary as a result of engineering, then I think it's, need to be clearly documented why these exceptions are granted in this particular scenario.
Yeah, I agree. And also, just to put a little bit more specificity behind the numbers, right, again, so when I said 60%, that was just rough. So it's, so 62.89% of this lot is not able to be calculated towards its FAR, because it's over the 30% slope. So that, that equates to 8,208 square feet out of a 13,050-square-foot lot. So that, that's quite an exception within, within the city. Now, it's not to say that there are other lots, but I think the other points that you're making, on the downhill side and with the shear wall...
That is required.
Yes, and that's required.
For structural reasons, and that had to be done, one way or another.
Right. And I think that can absolutely be articulated as part of these minutes this evening, a little bit different than what I said earlier about just the action items here, because this is a very fine point. We would make sure that we get those, that language correct for, for the record.
Thank you. And also, what about shoring? I mean, are we going to be able to document some sort of a shoring requirement in order for this construction to take place? It seems like a very unique situation from a safety perspective.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to add a condition about that, we could craft some language. However, I might just add that if shoring is going to be required, we're going to find out during the plan check process. And so that's just going to be above and, above and beyond what we know now.
I just want to ensure that the downslope property will not get affected from a safety perspective during the construction. You know, it's a dangerous site, and I've seen how some of these things have been done before, and absolutely, we need to be mindful about safety from a construction, during the construction process.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay? Anybody want to make a motion?
I would just say, actually, that number is 70%. It's because what they calculated out, they removed, you remove 9,200 out. So if you just take the 38, 42, developable, it ends up being less than 30% of that lot. So if that helps, to say, we're basically losing 70% of that lot because of the whole easement plus the slope.
And we would probably never allow it if it was not that it's an existing house. I think you made some very good points, though. Thank you. And I think the extra documentation will make it easier for us.
I'll make a motion to approve the design review permit to allow the renovation addition of the lower level of a two-story residence, with the setback exception to allow less than the minimum required upper-floor setbacks, and the floor area ratio exception to allow the floor area greater than 55% for a single-family residence for 375 La Prenda, subject to the staff, the findings and conditions in the staff report. I don't think I needed to add anything, right? And then we wanted to just add the findings that were noted by Commissioner Feng, by Chair Feng.
Right, so a couple of things that I mentioned is that, number one, we need to have some sort of analysis on shoring, whether or not that's going to be required as part of the construction documents, right? And should that be required, then shoring had to be a part of the plan. Second is that we have to document the reason for approving such a plan is due to the exception of the short, the shear wall still needs to happen in order for the construction to be safe. Due to the engineering analysis, whether it requires these shear walls to go all the way down, it would create these exceptional conditions, one way or another. And therefore, this FAR exception is justified.
But that's, the second part's for the minutes, not for a special condition.
It's not exactly a special condition, but we're just going to document why.
No, but it's for the minutes. So there's one condition you wanted to add, even though it's part of our regular process, and then the others for the minutes.
I don't think I'll, shoring is not a part of the regular process, because we don't usually do that.
I think he said it would be.
Yeah, my point is that during the structural plan check process, they'll determine whether or not full shoring is required.
Okay. Okay, fine. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Your votes, please? Those in favor?
Aye.
Five to nothing, 10 days to appeal. The project's been approved. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Pam. Hi.
Thank you and good to see you again.
I know, the other houses came out really nice, huh? I'm glad you sold them.
To we? Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good night. Staff update, please.
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to report out to the commission. I wanted to thank you again for your conversation about the accessory dwelling units. That input to us has been very valuable. We have started our community outreach process. So, Sam, can you help me on the date? I'm forgetting the date now, I'll verify. It was last Tuesday. Thank you. So last Tuesday, we held our first community workshop. It was attended fairly well. We had about 12 people that came and gave us a fair amount of really good feedback on things, on topics ranging from parking to lot coverage to height to privacy to architectural compatibility. So we continue with that process. We have a meeting scheduled for this coming Saturday, the 7th, and that is from Bernadette. I'm looking at you. The timeframe is...
10 to 1:00.
10:30. Sorry, thank you, Commissioner Wong.
10 to 1:00.
10:00 AM to 1:00 PM and then another meeting scheduled on September 10th. So two more opportunities for the community to come out and give us more feedback on the accessory dwelling units. So again, thank you very much and look forward to bringing back an ordinance when the time is right.
Soon.
Thank you, Director Meister. Commissioner comments? Anybody wish to make some comments?
Excuse me, what time is it on Saturday, 10 to 12?
10 to 1.
Commission comments? Who would like to speak?
I have some comments, but I'm not sure if there are they.
Are we done with staff updates?
Oh, okay.
Yes, they're done. Commissioner Joe?
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't here for the ADU ordinance review because I was really looking forward to that, so I'm, sorry, I couldn't make it here. I did watch the meeting and everybody had great comments and feedback, so you didn't need me.
They sure knocked me down, didn't they?
So, I just...
But I haven't given up yet.
Okay, not to open up the discussion, but just to add my own comments to it, just quick comments and just something to throw out there. Personally, I actually do have more parking concerns than some of the commissioners here, but it, with regard to different areas, so depending on which areas we're in, so that's something that I actually would like a little more consideration into that, depending on where you are, you know, as opposed to if you're in the big, if you're in the slopes, hills, as opposed to if you're down here, walking distance. So that's just a comment. Again, I know that there's a lot of different feedback. And then the other is just wondering if there might be a way of also factoring in a restriction on short-term rentals at the same time if you have an ADU to not allow it to be used as like an Airbnb-type situation, if there's a way to tie that in. Again, I don't, I just put that out there.
Right, I just comment, it's already part of the state law.
It is, okay, perfect.
We have recovered there, yeah.
Yeah, because that's something that I was a little bit concerned about because we're doing this to create housing, so, okay, and that's it, but everybody had a, had great, you guys had a great meeting without me, so that's fine.
Yeah, it was great. So I just want to clarify, so again, so September 7th, Millbrae Library Room A from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Again, that's a Saturday and then we'll do our third one on September 10th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, also at the Library Room A, so.
Commissioner Quip?
Is there a presentation or is it just information?
Yeah, so the community outreach workshops, we, at the first one, which was sort of our initial trial, if you will, we did a quick presentation just to make everybody aware of sort of what's happening at the state level and what's been happening locally and what the need is for our own ordinance. And then we have devised, we have four different tables where the community members are able to come and sit down and talk with staff people about what the topical area is. So again, it could be parking, it could be setbacks, lot coverage, those types of things. It can be looking at the differences between attached and detached and then also another table that looks at architectural compatibility, looks at height and privacy issues. So we're trying to get all that feedback and then we also have just another table for a lot of myriad of comments that might come up as part of this process. So it's been, it was well-received. I think our staff has done just a phenomenal job between housing and planning, working together to put this together for the community to come out and give us their feedback.
Anyone else? Commissioner Davis?
I just want to say one more time, thank you for all the work you did on Vallejo. That was above and beyond and just in general, thank you for everything you do. You have a lot on your plate and we appreciate everything you do.
It's my pleasure. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Wong?
Just a note on the Millbrae Art and Wine Festival. It was great fun, great weather this time, packed with people. Yeah, it's just an amazing event that the city can host such an event and host so many people. Everyone's had a good time. Then also, we had the first mid-autumn festival on Labor Day also, really good turnout. A lot of people showed up and great bands, great music, a lot of concessions. People really had a good time with that also, so. City's doing a great job. I'm not sure how much more benefit other than really building a great community. I've heard that, they said that like the Millbrae Art and Wine Festival is one of the only street fairs in the Bay Area that doesn't have paid-for parking, so I'm not sure if there's other ways we can generate revenue or think about getting more benefits from that. Actually, I think more people took art this year because I noticed the parking, the street parking around my neighborhood was a lot less than usual. Are there, are there any results from the Millbrae Traffic Survey yet? I'm kind of interested on the results of traffic survey.
I'm sorry, the traffic survey?
They had a survey about what's the priority, safety around schools or traffic in the streets.
The traffic calming workshop we had.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, I can find out from our public works director and report back to the commission on that. Yeah, I don't know offhand the results.
Interesting to see how that gets implemented or if we can incorporate those ideas into our traffic calm survey.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Quip.
I just remembered and I know Maureen mentioned it at the last meeting, but I wanted to mention again that the Millbrae Community Foundation is sponsoring a live concert on September the 27th and you can purchase your tickets at millbrea foundation.org and I hope that everyone can come. The group is Riptides and I understand it's supposed to be really good. Huh? Yeah, you know, huh? Yeah, somebody else I mentioned it, too, so. I'm going to send some flyers out to everybody. It's the 27th, yeah.
Very well, thank you. I just want to get some updates on a few things. Whether or not we have made any hatways on letting our residents to do permit lookups, any of that stuff? Do we have any expectations on that, Commissioner?
Yeah, so it is very high on the list. In fact, one of the thoughts we were having, too, as it related to the 210 Vallejo project was because I know that the neighbors are going to be very interested when those plans are submitted, as we're working on, it's going to be sort of a stagnant spreadsheet for now that will give status on projects until such time as we can automate that to push it out from our permit system. So I would anticipate here this month that we'll have that up online.
That's great. I think it's important for our residents to be able to look up these things online, not only for the applicants, but as well as the neighbors, so that they know what, you know, if they hear a jackhammer going up, right, they know that there's a permit for that and for the applicants, if they have put in their plans, they just need to know what stages of the approval process they're in. It's, you know, and then that's extremely important. Commissioner Quip, you want to make another comment?
Yes, it was a great report, thank you very much. However, if you could add one more column that kind of, on some of them, it said where they are now, but on some of them, it just said, but it doesn't tell you in what process it is.
Yeah, so that...
There could be like one more column that gives us a little update so we could get it at some point online, but in the meantime, maybe...
Yeah, and that was the intention of taking the next step. So the list that we gave you last time were just sort of what, who the project planner is, the application when it came in. We're going to expand some of those data fields to get a little bit more in terms of what the status is and so once you see that, I think you'll be, you'll be very happy because it will provide more information for both commission, staff, as well as the public.
Okay, very well. Another question I have is, you know, we discussed a little earlier, the previous meetings, that there might be an interest on some of the people who would want to get simple permits, like a kitchen remodel, bathroom remodel, simple permits such as this, to be able to get this over the counter. Do we have any update on that? Do we have any, make any hatway in terms of that process?
So I've been talking to our building official about simple TIs and so we do have to work internally to figure out what all review departments would need be a part of that. So it's still a work in progress, but we do have our eye towards trying to make that a streamline for very small kitchen remodels, you know, bathroom remodels, those types of things. So we are working towards trying to either make it an over-the-counter or one- or two-day review time for a permit.
Okay, can we have some update in due time?
Yes, so hopefully, I can get back to you at either the next meeting or first meeting in October on where we are in that process.
Shall we say first meeting of October?
That's fair. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have. Any other announcements we have?
I have a shredding party coming up again, but it will be in San Mateo, but Millbrae people are of course welcome to come and it's free.
All the shredding that we need. Thank you, Commissioner Joe. Anybody else would like to make an announcement? We're done? We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.